Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And I welcome all of you to our City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September the 5th. It is 6:00 PM and we are in the community wing of City Hall. I would ask you all to please rise and join me for our Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every seat and government
Thank you all. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Mayor Alford.
President.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
And City Attorney, Mr. Bill Reichman, will be joining us momentarily, but we'll go ahead and begin. The agenda item first up is public participation. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the Communications Marketing Director seated in the back of the room. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point. Avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. So with that, I would invite any member of the public to please come forward. Please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ken McDowell, and you may be able to guess why I'm up here once again. I'm up here once again to demand, on behalf of this city taxpayers, a forensic audit. Now, you guys approved it when this was first brought up. A week later, you walk it back. I think that you found out what a forensic audit entailed. You associated it with a financial audit. Different animals. But let me tell you, this city has never had one performed. We need a forensic audit. Now, you may have your own personal reasons for not wanting it done, but the people that pay the bills for this city want it done. I'm not the only one in this city that wants it. If you could, I've heard it bandied about by a couple that maybe it's just too darned expensive. Well, you know what? A $5 million splash pad over at Holland Park, that's not very expensive, is it? $1.2 million for a kayak launch over there at Waterfront Park, that's not too expensive, is it? It's very easy for each of you to spend our money without any culpability. There's too much going on in this city, and we need a forensic audit that will go back a minimum, well, 10 years is the approximate. 10 years. Never had one done. Let's open up the city, put some sunshine on it, open up this city government, and I'll also turn around and look back at our city employees back there and implore them, every employee that works for this city, take advantage of being a whistleblower, but do not utilize the city's whistleblower program because you will be identified. There are other ways you can be a whistleblower. If you know something, you say something. But I know that at least two of the members up on this dais were mentored by a crook, the previous mayor of this city. Mentored by them. Both of them are on the record as saying they were mentored by this crook. So all I can say is that people of Palm Coast stand up, demand a forensic audit from each of our representatives up here. We need it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please, please, please. Let's have respect for the next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Good evening, City Council Mayor Andrew Palm Coast. So my time in working with the city council hasn't just been about advocating for change, but about seeing how each of you govern, seeing what each of you believe that your roles are in the process. So it's been an education for me. I've had a good time. So watching you deliberate, not all the time, but a lot of times I can't find a standard by which you guys are using, okay? I sometimes find a lack of foundation. Not in judgment, just in observation. Only one of you throughout our time brought up property rights and trusting citizens to do what is right with our opportunities. Thank you, Councilmember Pontieri. So since there's a lack of foundation in discussion sometimes, let me provide some examples of foundational American values. So as Palm Coast grows, let's consider adapting to systems that have been set before us from our founding. It's not just about backyard chickens. This is about American values and advocating for people, okay? So our money, all of our money has three things on it. It has liberty, "In God we trust," and "E Pluribus Unum," okay? Liberty is defined as the ability to do what one ought without interference from the government or corporate entities, okay? That's one. The other is the Declaration of Independence, and that says, "To secure our rights," which is what you guys' jobs are, "to secure our rights, we elect men," in this case, "men and women," "who derive their just powers by the consent of the governed." Those are the folks sitting behind me and myself, okay? So recently, my own story, there's a politician in town, and he's a senator, a governor that served two terms. He came and spoke to a group of people. He knows a little bit about governance because he obviously was a governor for eight years here in the state of Florida, and he's a senator now. His idea of government was that the government should do everything it can to provide people with opportunities to live their absolute best life they can possibly think up, okay? So government fosters the environment, and then he said, "It gets out of the way," okay? All right? I love that he said that, okay? And finally, I'm going to use Palm Coast's own comprehensive plan. So Goal 10, "Respect judicially acknowledged and constitutionally protected private property rights." It says in our own plan, our own comprehensive plan states, "The city shall consider and recognize the constitutionally protected private property rights of all property owners and consider such rights in local decision-making consistent with the intent of Florida statutes, state comprehensive plan, and other applicable statutory requirements," okay? So in my opinion, your own plan, the Chicken Pilot Program was the perfect example, okay? It would have protected residents that do not want chickens in their neighborhood. Under the program, like a quarter of a percent of people would have been affected by the pilot, and yet we trample on these American values. So let's not think that we are better to reinvent the American governance. American values are Florida's values. Florida's values should be Palm Coast values. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
I'm Hannah Fabian from Palm Coast, and I also want to feel like we have the freedom to use our own property in the way that we see fit, and I think that there's a lack of trust. What I'm sensing in this community is a lack of trust in the representation, and I think it is worthwhile for the people of Palm Coast to step forward and investigate, for lack of a better word, something needs to come to the light, and I don't know how else to say it, but I think that's worth looking into for the people of Palm Coast. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I actually have something nice to say today. Regarding the franchise fee tax, you guys did a good job of taking care of that. Looks like we're prevented from having that come and bite us back later on with that, and Nick did a good job of trying to explain it. However, it's still another tax we don't want or need. You know, FPL had a rate increase, and they had a rate increase, and still have tax. Why would you want to pay tax on that? Likewise, we would not want to pay tax on our water, sewer, and garbage when we already had a substantial rate increase. So I'm glad you guys killed that and took care of that. It seems like you did a good job taking care of it. Now, I remember reading about that we get a $54 million grant to go towards making turnoff lanes along Belt Air, a little big repaving project. So I hope they'll incorporate some turnoff lanes at some of the intersecting streets in the process. For example, eastbound Whiteview, when you hit Belt Air, you need a dedicated right-turn lane. Royal Palms, westbound, when you hit Belt Air, you need a dedicated right-turn lane there. You know I'm always talking about right-turn lanes and moving traffic around the city. So when we get to the general repaving process after all this, if we can make sure we integrate some more of these turnoff lanes into the repaving process. And once again, I'll offer volunteer my time. I'll drive anyone who'd be around or all of you around, and someone from the city, from the street department, to show out where these problem areas are, and you can maybe get them done at one shot. Because in the police office for 20 years, the manager makes a decision, and it's wrong because he didn't consult with the workers, then spends two years in the act of Congress to try to correct it. So we want to try, if we do this, try to get it as right as possible the first time around. Now, our noise ordinance we have, I know it's difficult for the police to enforce this, but we have a big problem with, the biggest problem is pickup trucks with loud mufflers, tuner cars with loud mufflers, especially the ones that intentionally backfire. These are really, really bad. You have people with pets and PTSD, veterans. I live on Winfield Drive in the Loop, and you can hear all this noise at Belt Air and at Pine Lakes, and you hear them droning on motorcycles. So, I mean, can we just get a plate number and report it? I know this opens up, I know what you're going to say. It opens up the door for reporting someone just because they have an ugly tree in their yard, you don't like the color of their house, so. And, you know, fireworks is another thing. We had that space capsule come in Sunday night. That was as loud as any firework we can hear during these holidays, and actually it's quiet this year, but. And the sheriff says, "Oh, we can't do anything unless, you know, you give us a specific address." And someone else said, "Well, unless you see the lighter fuse, they can't do anything about it." So I don't know what we can do. I'm challenging you. You have a business meeting or a workshop next week. You can bring up some ideas on how we can combat some of this noise in this city if we can. And real quickly at the end here, stop building multifamily houses, especially over two stories high. I did support the forensic audit. My friend talked me out of it, but I'm okay with it, and I'm okay with backyard chickens. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Jeffrey Seib. Many people come here to speak at city council meetings, asking for something, and others even demand some action from the council. My speaking now has to do with the fact that the people of Palm Coast are just overwhelmed and maxed out with all the housing projects coming before the council to be approved. The numbers are over the top. Thousands of new units this year alone? That's thousands more cars, thousands more folks everywhere. When will it end? When every stretch of open land has an apartment, 50-foot lot home, or some other development? Out-of-control growth is not a characteristic of a healthy community or a healthy environment. The concern I have is, can our city readily absorb a massive increase in our population in a relatively short period of time without experiencing a significant decline in our present quality of life? In general terms, the city's budget has an amount that will cover, to some degree, the current residents' needs for city services. Then there is an amount of the budget that is meant to cover, to some degree, future residents' needs for city services. With ever increasing taxes and fees, this is what we get. But this year's budget may be less than what staff originally proposed, which required budget cuts. The explanation by staff of where the cuts will come from shows that city expenditure for current residents' needs will be cut, and some of the proposed future Palm Coast needs will also be cut. In this time of reduced government funding, it would be best for the city council and staff to prioritize the needs of current residents over future residents. I have spoken to the council before recommending taking the next two years to shore up, repair, and improve the current Palm Coast. Since that's not happening, I would ask the city council to consider, at this time, implementing a six-month moratorium on any further approvals of large developments, master plan developments, and apartment complexes. A moratorium is a useful tool that many cities here in Florida have utilized to slow things down for a period of time. With thousands of housing units already approved this year, we certainly could use a breather that would give the city time to get everything here now up to par. So that is why I am asking the council to consider a moratorium.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Nathan Phelps, Palm Coast, one of the chicken people you've become familiar with. Obviously, I'm here to talk about chickens and the workshop. That was last month. When I, I feel like we need to change the rules. When there's a workshop and the stakeholders are present, being looked at and being addressed, we should have the opportunity to rebut to things that are stated. We're part of the discussion, so I'd like that to be considered, that we could be part of it. But we began this campaign, you know, with our sunny side up, and over time, the situation kind of became hard-boiled and maybe even has become deviled. But I don't know, maybe we thought the topic died, but it hasn't died. I'm here because some of the arguments that were made were just completely egregious, and honestly, I was shell-shocked at the reasons that were given and even miscreants that went unchallenged in the decision made about chickens. So I will start with that. Point one, we felt that we were dismissed reductively as just five young people who should be congratulated for working hard, but every person involved in our committee has ranged 30 to 40 people with children. We are working-age people, we are citizens, and we are your equals, so please don't talk down to us. That felt just rude. We are professionals, and if you want, you know, industry in town, you kind of need to keep us around. The biggest one, people keep talking about goats. I don't know where these goats keep coming from that people think are going to follow the chickens in, but I would like to, one slippery slope is obviously always used. If, you know, if you park cars, people are going to start parking airplanes in the road. Obviously, there's a point we need to consider logic when we bring up the slippery slope fallacy. We put a lot of work into getting chickens here. If you can find someone dumb enough to try and do all the work we did to try to justify goats, we went through finding precedent in other towns. We went with the comparison. We made laws based off of other cities. I'm sure no one's going to find multiple cities with regulations that allow goats to the level that we have. It's not going to happen, and they're just not related anyways. Then I want to move on to, one of my least favorite was the, is a stat I would say was pulled so far out of someone's butt that they're still passing fingernails in their stool. The idea that chickens are going to drop $25,000 off of house prices, that's ridiculous, and no one challenged that, and also no one has, like, proved that that's substantial. So I went ahead, I did some research. This was a study coming out of Cheyenne, Wyoming, where residents didn't want them for the same reason that I get brought up here. Someone said, "We talked to multiple Realtors, and all of them said," from multiple different towns, "said, 'There's no proof that that's true, that in any case it ever did that.'" I'm going to take a little extra time, I'm sorry. And then, then also Realtor.com has an article saying that, you know, a well-kept one could actually be considered attractive to people moving here that may want chickens. There are more than one type of people that wants to move to this town. This is a beautiful town, and its appeal goes beyond whether or not there are chickens that exist. That's, I'm sorry, that's ridiculous. We're not going to be tanking that. And, yeah, we just felt dismissed, and we heard that people were afraid of newspaper headlines, but the headlines that came out were that Palm Coast chickened out and that chickens aren't allowed, only sheep are. So we got our bad headlines either way.
Can you sum, can you finish up?
Yeah, I can sum it up. I actually wanted to talk about something else, if I could take another three minutes, or I'll come back. All right.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I had one quick question. We are here representing, or we want to talk on the topic of subject number 10. Would this be the appropriate time to do it? It's agenda item.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
We are here from the Public Club West, representing, or we'd like to speak on topic number 10.
So we have an agenda item coming up. If you would hold your comments, it would be more appropriate to bring them forward during the agenda item.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Manley Kuntz, I have some photos I wanted to distribute to the council.
Afterwards, you can give them to the clerk.
Okay. Back in 2022, I saw big trucks next to my house, and they were digging out the gutter for the runoff of my water. So I came to the meeting in 2022 with the pictures that are in here. There's two sets of pictures, Items 1 and Items 2. And they dug out their gutter, but my problem was the ruts they created in my yard I was upset with. I came to the meeting, you did address it, and I appreciate it. However, I have a more serious issue now, is that although it was dug out so the water drained off, I just went out there, and you'll see in Pictures 2, where there's still water there, sitting there, but if you look at my picture shooting longways, the weeds are probably four feet high, have never been touched. The water is probably sitting under there. I'm afraid to go out in my weed whacker because I might have an alligator on the water underneath there, so I don't know about that. And I don't, if my yard looked like that, I'm sure I would get a notice from the City of Palm Coast to fix it. I don't understand why the city can do a project and not maintain it when they expect the homeowner to maintain his yard. So my issue is, I would like to find out who's going to take care of getting rid of those weeds. I mean, they are tall, and somebody comes to buy my house, I'm sure that's going to be a negative effect for my selling the house. So I would like to leave these pictures, and hopefully you'll remember my comments, and take a look at those, and you'll see what I'm talking about. It's very disturbing. It's not a pretty sight to look at when you walk out your front door, and people drive down the road. My man mows the grass, but he can't get in there because he'll lose his mower. So people can't see it until they get to the corner, and as you get to the corner, they look and make faces and everything else about how it looks. I'm not the one in charge of that. That's the city. They did it. They should be maintaining it, just like they expect me to maintain my residence. I thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Please make sure that our communications director has your street address in the back, if you would. The communications director, she's got her hand up back there. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The last meeting that I was here.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
Dennis McAdams, yep. The last meeting that I was here, there was a project that came up, and one of the interesting things in doing a little research about it is, is that it's down on the corner of Colbert and Roberts Road.
Mr. McDonald, I think, if I may, I think.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about, not talking about that. I'm saying this is the issue that was brought up from that meeting.
So you're not, because that project is coming up on the agenda.
I understand that.
Okay, so you're not talking about that.
No, I'm talking about how, the process of the city. How can we be at a point where we have projects already built on, okay, and projects being changed in an MPD, where when I call the FDEP and talk to them about the Lehigh Cement Company that functioned here 24/7, seven days a week, for 13 continuous years and made products out of cement and concrete, that they have absolutely no clue that it even existed here, okay? Which means to me that the city obviously never had any contact, or the county for that matter. I just find that there's a whole lot lacking in our process here to rush in all the development that everybody is talking about that was up here previous to me. So I'd like an explanation, you know, if I could, Mayor, as to how the city manager and the staff could be in a situation where this isn't coming to light. How many other problems do we have around here? But certainly, this was a very, very big project. It was probably the biggest corporate employer here in the 50s and then the 60s. Nobody was bigger than Lehigh. You know, we all go down to the, to the park or down off of Colbert, okay, and everybody talks about the Lehigh Trail. Well, where did the Lehigh Trail come from? Okay, it was a company that was so big, they had their own railroad spur that ran to Benel. That's significant, but yet the FDEP doesn't know anything about it? So the second question I had for you, sir, is very simply this. You're obviously aware, with a lot of training, of the Sunshine Law, and I'm sure you've had countless sessions on the Sunshine Law. So I'm here to ask you, would that mean that in the future, you are not able to talk about things between members on this council, okay, that are coming up before the, at the meeting, okay, or that will come up potentially in the future? So I would assume, if that's the case, that we're not going to hear any more about affordable housing? Would I be correct on that?
This is your time for comments, so we don't, this is not a.
Well, I'm just putting that out there, okay? Okay, because, you know, if there is a conversation about affordable housing in the future, that'll be a problem with the Sunshine Law. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
So it's fitting that yesterday was Labor Day, because during the moment of silence, I thought and remembered of the 100 million-plus comrades that we lost in the fight for a better world. And I know the crowd might hear the praising of communism and scoff at that idea, but I've now been to enough meetings here that I realize that the way that we run the city greatly aligns with the way of Karl Marx thought. In Palm Coast, we don't believe that the citizens should be allowed to change the opinions of the all-knowing government or even control their own property. And according to Karl Marx, the theory of communism may be summed up in one sentence: abolish all private property. According to Murray Rothberg, private property is the heart and soul of freedom. The definition of freedom in any society is the extent to which that society recognizes and upholds the free individual right to private property. So if we're not going to recognize private property rights, and we've thrown away the entire heart and soul of this country, and we're ignoring the founding principles of the country, I can't put some new rules that would greatly align with the way that we run the city. I looked up, and it said that anywhere between 5% and 10% of people in the U.S. are vegans, so it makes sense that we should outlaw people from grilling meat outside, as the smell of the meat could blow over into their neighbor's house, and that that could hurt them. And I've also noticed that people come up here all the time and say very mean things to you, and I'm sure that hurts your feelings, and so we shouldn't allow that. If we're throwing out the founding of our country, what's the First Amendment? And then what about the second one? Why should, they're scary people with guns. Why should they be allowed to have that? Not in this city. So it is with great honor today that I announce to you that I've created the United Workers' Party of Palm Coast, which aligns with the goals of Palm Coast and communism, the greater the causes to the city and our county, and we would like to give the full endorsement to all the good work you're doing here, and especially to Vice Mayor Danko. He, he thrashes.
Please, Josh, please address your comments to me.
Can I be telling you about Danko?
Please address them to me.
Okay, yeah. He thrashes property rights better than anyone else up here. He says if you don't like the way that things are ran, then you can move away, and he really is a good way of killing the spirit of the bourgeoisie, and under that rule, I'm sure he can lead us to a better tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. Many cities in Florida are experiencing a great increase in traffic within their residential neighborhoods, and there's been some scientific studies by world health organizations and universities to do about traffic harm to children and all. And these health organizations did a study on harm of cigarette smokes. Why? Why did they do it? Well, they loved the people. They wanted to protect their health and to save lives. Harm to the businesses and buildings. Why? Love of people, to protect their health and to save their lives. Well, these same scientific studies. Well, these same scientific studies are coming from the, these organizations about how uh, traffic in close proximity to homes harmed the health of the residents. Why did they do them? Well, to protect people's health and save their lives. Many health uh, studies have been done of the harm of health from traffic fumes, dust, noise, and pro, close proximity homes harmed to health from prolonged exposure to traffic fumes, dust, and noise. And now why, why are many cities ignoring these scientific studies that are out there? Traffic fumes, dust are similar, are similar, and uh, of different things that can harm health and uh, cumulative, in uh, their nature. A very, a very good, uh, children are especially vulnerable to automobile emissions, health impacts because among other reasons, they breathe more air relative to their bodies' body weight than adults. Are more physically active and spend more times outdoors during time when pollution levels are at their highs. Additionally, children have more years ahead of them in which accumulative damage caused by automobile emissions, poisons can manifest itself as disease or disability. There's a very good movie that came out. It was called The Sound of Freedom, and in the ending quote, it says, "God's children are not for sale." Well, when I think about all the traffic and how it's harming residential neighborhoods, may I modify it just a little bit? God's children's health is not for sale for, or for convenience of drivers to use all the residential neighborhoods they want to as shortcuts. When using traffic common methods to protect residential neighborhoods is available to protect the residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Um, next speaker, please.
I'm gonna try to get through this.
You want to sit down?
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast.
You want, you want to pull a chair up?
Excuse me?
Do you want to pull a chair up?
No, I'm fine.
All right.
Um, I'm gonna do something that's probably never been done before, but if I, if I'm wrong, it won't be the first time I've been told I'm wrong. Would Chief Kyle Berryhill please come up?
Mr. McDonald, you really need to-
It's important.
No, I'm sure it's important, but you really need to address your comments to me and not put staff on the point. Kyle will be listening, please.
Okay.
He'll be listening very intently.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I've sat here for thirty-three minutes, and I've heard people gripe, complain, find fault with everything that's wrong with this city. But most of the people who have been up here are not regular attendees like some of us all. But while I was trying to bring some um, good to the Palm Coast Fire Department and the Sheriff's Department and our first responders, because if anybody's been on Facebook, they've known that we've had a bad day. And we've had not just one bad day, we've had a couple of them. And nobody, nobody should have to go through what these guys went through for the last three or four days, and they're still going through them. When I was a fireman in New Jersey, I experienced one fatal fire, and that was fifty-three years ago. Fifty-three years ago! And I could still remember that as if it was yesterday. Instead of criticizing and finding fault, what's wrong with this city? One of these same people who get up, I can't say that word. Instead of these people getting up and complaining and finding fault, why don't you join the fire department? Why don't you join and volunteer at the first aid? No, I don't see anybody saying, hey, I want to join. No! They don't do that. They come up here and they get you three minutes of glory, and you people gotta sit here and put up with their, can't say that word either. No, you know what? I'm gonna probably get thrown out, but I don't care at this point. You gotta put up with their crap! That's wrong! Granted, you have every right to come up here, but you don't have the right to criticize the people that are doing the job. If you don't like the way that somebody's doing a job, volunteer, put your hands up and say, hey, you know what? I'd like to do that job. And I've had a lot of fire chiefs, I've had a lot of officers that I've lived through, but I'll tell you one thing in the twenty-eight seconds I got left over. You know what? If I was still young enough to do this, I wouldn't want anybody leading the charge into a building other than him. Nobody! And again, you people, all you do is sit there and criticize, and him. Everybody picks on him. No, you don't pick on him. Damn! Sorry, can't say that word either.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald, and thank you for reminding us of the tragedies that our first responders have had to deal with this weekend. It's uh, it has been a difficult couple of days. So with that, are there any other remaining members of the public that would like to speak to City Council at this time? Yes, sir.
As I was a few minutes ago, Nathan Phelps, Palm Coast. Um, so obviously I've been showing up to these meetings about six months now. I've got to interact with the government firsthand, uh, with at least everybody on the council at least once, uh, which I am grateful for, but in the process I have found that what should be a conservative town is actually not run in a conservative way. And I, I only say that because there are, uh, and this isn't just my opinion, but from people I've met that have been here a long time, people that haven't been here very long, uh, an oppressive amount of rules that, uh, we feel infringe upon our constitutional rights. Other people have said, I spoke to someone who's been here twenty-five years, he says, you just go numb to the rules. And then other people say, I moved to Florida, I thought I was going to have conservative governance, but that's not the case. And as what I've, I've learned when saying, I think property rights are important constitutionally, uh, I hear, well, we have rules in place, and that's, that's the end of it. And, uh, but that's something that can be changed, and the people on City Council have that power and should have the impetus, and it should be in you to see what rules do we need to keep and what rules can we sunset? Um, and a lot of them are in protection of the values here in Palm Coast, but I've said there's a lot of value here in this town just being here. It's not because all the trash cans are in the right place and the right things are in storage that shouldn't be in front of your house. Those aren't the reasons. And, but what I've learned, uh, I learned over the COVID era is that the government doesn't like to give back the, the rights that it takes away. It doesn't like to give back power that it takes. As we saw, mask mandates lasted way too long, even when we proved they're not efficient. But we saw that from Joe Biden. That's not something that we should see here in town. We should be, as G.K. Chesterton says, when he discusses conservatism, isn't just something that you put in place and leave. Compare it to, say, a painted white post. You need to reassess that you can't just leave that post in place, or what happens? It weathers, it deteriorates, it becomes rotten, it becomes dirty. Instead, you have to paint it again. So we should be reassessing the rules that we have in place, and do we need those, or should we give them back to the people because we are on this board Republicans, which should be conservatives, which conservatives are known in their, in their heyday for deregulation, for communicating why we do the hard things. Ronald Reagan was a great communicator. He communicated when he was doing hard things, and he won forty-nine out of fifty states. We shouldn't be afraid of reelection by deregulating. Instead, we should be giving freedom back to people. You, if, uh, as I said, someone told me, you just go numb to the rules, but if my wife or child said, I coexist with you because I go numb to you, then that's bad governance. That's bad leadership on my part, and I would be reassessing that, reassessing my relationship. So I bring up these concerns, uh, out of love and out of appreciation of this town. Uh, I haven't been here a long time, but it has a historical meaning to my wife's family. Her, I'll just bring it up and then I'll go. Her last vacation with her dad when he was healthy was actually at Flagler Beach, and his, he's, he passed away years ago, but his, his background picture of his Facebook post is still my wife and him standing on Flagler Beach. And so that's one of the reasons we moved here, and this really is a great town, but we would also like to see more freedom for American citizens here.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, any other members of the public, uh, want to address City Council at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment, and I'll go to the dais. Um, are there any items that you care to address at this time, or you want to have staff follow up? City manager, you have notes on all of the follow-ups that were requested, and we have the addresses of the individuals, so that we'll get back to each one of them. Very good, thank you. All right, with that, I will move on to the minutes of prior meetings. Um, I'm looking for a motion for the minutes of the City Council meeting held on August the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. It was a business meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor to approve the minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Similarly, uh, the minutes of the City Council's special budget workshop meeting held on August the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Adanko. A second from, uh, Councilwoman Clufus. Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. With that, we're going to move forward with, uh, our proclamations this evening. We have, uh, several, uh, actually we have six proclamations. Um, I have asked, uh, my fellow City Council members to please, um, approach the podium and, um, um, offer the proclamation with those that are in attendance. Um, each group may certainly address the public, um, upon completion of the proclamation, and please stand by for a photograph when it's finished. And I think Councilman Clufus, if you would begin?
It is.
Is, I'm sorry? Would you?
If you would begin. Let's take them both with you. So our first proclamation will be regarding National Black Business Month. Whereas National Black Business Month is an annual observance that aims to highlight and support black-owned businesses, entrepreneurs, and professionals, recognizing their significant role in driving economic growth, fostering innovation, and creating employment opportunities. And whereas black-owned businesses have historically faced systematic challenges and disparities, making it essential to raise awareness of their accomplishments and provide avenues for growth and prosperity. And whereas the African-American Entrepreneurs Association, AAEA, fosters economic development through entrepreneurship within the African-American community through education, mentoring workshops, and microfinancing opportunities. And whereas the city of Palm Coast acknowledges the critical importance of supporting black entrepreneurs and businesses to ensure the thriving local economy and a more just society. And whereas by commemorating National Black Business Month, the city of Palm Coast reaffirms its commitment to fostering an inclusive environment that values diversity, encourages economic empowerment, and works towards eradicating inequities. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that August twenty-twenty-three be officially designated as National Black Business Month. In the city of Palm Coast, and remind all citizens to take a part in celebrating the accomplishments of black-owned businesses and entrepreneurs, and actively support their growth and development. Signed this fifth day of September, twenty-twenty-three, Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and the mayor of Palm Coast, Mayor David Alphen. Thank you.
Leslie, I know you must have a few words to share.
Of course. Uh, first of all, um, I want to thank the City Council, the mayor, especially the mayor for being intentional about creating, uh, inclusive environment when it comes to economic development, um, for all of us in this community. And, uh, I also want to thank the people of Palm Coast. I've been here, I've been living here for thirty-two years now. I don't look that way. I, I was one of the young families that moved here back in ninety-one, when there was only two traffic lights, by the way. So, uh, yeah, so it's, it's amazing to see the growth, uh, and I'm just ecstatic to know that our organization started here in two thousand and sixteen. Basically, we became a nonprofit in two thousand eighteen, but thanks to the governor at the time, now the Senator Scott, we are now in four states. So it all started here in Flagler County, so I am truly grateful to Flagler County for helping with this initiative that we have started and that has branched out to four different, uh, four or five different cities throughout the United States. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
If-
I got cleaned up, though.
Okay. Stay down there, you have another one coming.
Guys, I got backup just in case.
There we go, perfect.
Do we have anyone who's going to be presented the national cleanup? Yes, all right, staff? There we go. Counsel, pardon my back.
Oh, yeah, bring him up, absolutely.
National, uh, National Cleanup Day, volunteers, attendees? Hey, there's our guy, Mr. Butler.
Come on, Bill, come on up.
Potentially a familiar face? Yeah. Thank you guys for being here today. Whereas National Cleanup Day recognizes the need to protect the health and beauty of our city as well as our nation, and whereas the city of Palm Coast takes great pride in its beauty and vibrancy and supports a clean, safe environment now and in the future. And whereas National Cleanup Day is a partnership with our city, local land managers, and local national nonprofit organizations. And whereas a cleaner environment promotes positive community values and property values and the economic vitality of our city. And whereas a cleaner environment further encourages pride in our community and is a bridge to citizen engagement. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the sixteenth of September, twenty-twenty-third be officially designated as National Cleanup Day, and urge all residents, businesses, civic groups, government agencies, and other organizations to participate in National Cleanup Day by doing their part each and every day to keep Palm Coast clean by taking advantage of our Adopt-A programs and annual cleanup events because trash is a literal effort. Signed this fifth day of September, twenty-twenty-three, attested by Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and City of Palm Coast, Florida Mayor David Alphen. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. We have quite a few, um, members of our community who participate throughout the year. We wanted to take the time to, um, recognize them. Um, we here have certificates for you guys, for, uh, for the church, for the church for the-
Church.
Church. We'll make sure everybody gets the right certificate. We'll make sure everybody gets the right certificates and sign, so. I'll get them to you guys after that. Thank you. Thank you to you and the other families for everything that you do in our community and truly treating it as a neighborhood.
Thank you for that. And if I could... Nick, if I could just ask city manager to take a plug on the waterway cleanup, which is very, are you doing that already?
We do have a small expert in a, expert in a presentation.
Okay.
On behalf of the Rotary Club of Flagler County, I just want to thank the Public Works Department for their efforts in keeping our city one of the cleanest cities I've ever been to. And I know it takes a lot of hard work, it's dangerous work being out there, working among the traffic and, you know, being on the adopt-a-road cruise for our church, my church, Trinity Presbyterian Church, and the Rotary Club. I know it's hard work, but thank you for all you do.
I know.
Thank you all very much.
And mayor, we do have a short video and presentation related to the proclamation.
All right, so let's run the video. Hold on just a second. Sorry.
The city of Palm Coast is a beautiful place to live, learn, work, and play.
From our parks and trails to our incredible waterfront views, our city's diverse landscapes are a big part of what makes living in Palm Coast so special.
But with great beauty comes the great responsibility of maintaining the places and spaces we hold dear, to assure that our community can thrive well into the future.
For this reason, we are excited to announce our Keep Palm Coast Clean initiative, which invites you, our residents, to play a significant part in helping us sustain the great lifestyle we have here in Palm Coast.
Whether you're an individual looking to get involved and make a positive impact or a business group or neighborhood that wants to seize the opportunity to enhance your local community, we have several ways to get started as volunteers in our Adopt-A Park, Adopt-A Trail, or Adopt-A Shoreline programs.
As our community grows, so does the need to be vigilant about keeping our city clean. In two thousand and twenty-two, our Public Works Department was responsible for collecting over one hundred thousand pounds of trash. From October, two thousand and twenty-two to August, two thousand and twenty-three, that number is already nearly ninety thousand pounds, which does not include bulk items and illegal dump sites and household items. It goes without saying that it takes a literal effort to maximize our sustainability.
Through these efforts, the city of Palm Coast will provide all necessary equipment, safety vests, safety training, and trash disposal services on-site. All you need to bring is your ambition and a willingness to help.
The city will also offer unique rewards and recognition, like signs displayed for participating groups at service locations and on the city's Parks and Recreation website. Students can also attain volunteer service hours for their contributions to any of our Keep Palm Coast Clean programs.
So what are you waiting for? Visit palmcoast.gov/keeppcclean to learn more and sign up to help make a difference today.
Sorry for that. Good evening, my name is Alyssa Roscoe, I'm your residential collection supervisor, and this is... Is that better? I've never been told I'm quiet before. Good evening, my name is Alyssa Roscoe, I'm your residential collection supervisor, and with me I have Mr. Hurst, who is our Parks and Rec Director as well. And we wanted to present a quick presentation in regard to the proclamation just provided. Palm Coast Clean is a litter-all effort campaign. We believe that tackling litter is an issue, is a collective responsibility that requires the active participation of every resident in addition to the commendable efforts already undertaken by our Public Works Department. Litter tarnishes our beautiful city's appearance and as far as reaching environmental impacts and economic consequences. We aim to create a cleaner and more sustainable environment for future and present generations. The essence of our campaign lies in its inclusivity, a call for all residents to join hands and become stewards of our city's cleanliness. While our Public Works Department and community events have been making commendable strides in maintaining the city's appeal, the magnitude of the litter problem necessitates a comprehensive approach. The Keep Palm Coast Clean campaign emphasizes the power of individual actions. By engaging our residents in litter prevention and cleanup efforts, we can multiply the impact and create a true sense of ownership. During our presentation, we will dive deeper into the initiative strategies of our campaign purposes and will highlight how educational initiatives can empower residents with the knowledge to reduce litter at its source. Additionally, we will showcase plans for community cleanups events that foster a sense of camaraderie and beautifying our neighborhoods. As Palm Coast continues growing and flourishing, the litter challenge inevitably follows suit. Recognizing this fact, our Public Works Department has adopted a proactive stance, firmly believing that addressing litter is a litter-all issue, requiring the collection and participation of every resident. Over the past two years, the Public Works Crew has made significant strides to counteract litter and its adverse effects on our community, and the data speaks for itself. As the video stated, in two thousand and twenty-two, our crews collected a staggering one hundred three thousand, three hundred and ninety-five pounds of trash, demonstrating our resolution and dedication to cleanliness and our environmental well-being. This year alone, our efforts have not wavered and we have already collected over eighty-six thousand pounds of litter in two thousand and twenty-three. To this end, we are committed to expanding our efforts on two critical fronts. First being our routine litter collection operations will remain a cornerstone of our approach, and by consistently maintaining the cleanliness of our streets, parks, and public spaces, we actively prevent litter from accumulating and tarnishing our city's appeal. Secondly, and equally important, is our intention to harness the power of community engagement. We have devised a comprehensive strategy encouraging residents to participate actively in the battle against litter. Throughout the year, we will host a series of well-coordinated litter cleanup events where combined efforts of our local citizens and our city personnel will drive a positive change. These events will remove litter and foster a sense of unity amongst our residents. The tremendous success that we've had with Keep Palm Coast Clean events has significantly contributed to the ongoing efforts battling litter in our area. These events have garnered enthusiastic participation and showcased a profound effect of collective action in our community's cleanliness. The Keep PC Clean events are vibrant occasions where residents from all walks of life come together to address a litter issue that our city faces actively. These events remind us that maintaining a clean environment is not just the duty of a few, but the shared responsibility of us each. Organizing these events aims to empower residents and nurture a sense of pride and ownership in their surroundings. In two thousand and twenty-two, the Keep Palm Coast Clean events show the city's dedication, and we witnessed over another six hundred pounds of litter being collected during a singular event. This remarkable turnout and enthusiastic participation highlighted the collective commitment to making our city cleaner and a more beautiful place to live. As we continue into two thousand and twenty-three, I am pleased to share that the Keep PC Clean events have yielded more astonishing results. For the last year, it's collected over one thousand pounds of trash at that event alone. The inspiring achievement underscores the residents' growing awareness and engagement in contributing to our city's cleanliness. However, the impact of these events goes beyond immediate litter collection. They have become a rallying point for fostering a culture of continuous cleanliness and environmental stewardship. The Keep PC Clean events serve as a catalyst for change, including encouraging our residents to not only participate in these events, but to maintain that throughout the year. As the mayor had mentioned previously, the annual Palm Coast International Waterway Cleanup is coming up. Since its inception in two thousand and eight, that's been a rallying force for positive change and inspiring residents to actively contribute to the well-being of our city and its natural surroundings. This event, now an annual tradition, stands as a testament to our city's dedication to preserving the beauty and vitality of the intercoaster waterway area. Over the years, residents and participants of the cleanup have collectively removed an astounding thirty thousand pounds of litter from our waterways. This achievement also underscores the significant impact that can be achieved when we work together for a common use. The initiative stands beyond that Cleanup Day itself. It signifies a year-round, equipped commitment to mindful stewardship and surroundings, and the event is an opportunity for education and awareness. Registration for the annual intercoaster waterway cleanup is now open, and our visitors and residents can sign up by going to palmcoast.gov.
So in addition to these great programs that we just had, we do have a few Adopt-A programs. So we have Adopt-A Park, Adopt-A Trail, Adopt-A Shoreline, Adopt-A Road, and Adopt-A Medians. So this diverse selection allows our community to choose programs that resonate with them and their interests, and then turning these individuals' actions into a collective impact for the community. So they're great programs. So the first one is, we have Adopt-A Park. So we have fourteen parks in city of Palm Coast. So these play a pivotal role in enhancing our community's spaces and functionality. So participants in this program take a vital role in maintaining the cleanliness and become ambassadors for our parks. This also kind of goes beyond a little bit of litter cleanup. We do encourage our participants who haven't adopted a park to, you know, look for vandalism, report anything broken, like swings or anything, to us, so we're ready to go the next day or as soon as we can to come and handle that situation, do some cleanup, and replace some broken items. We also have the Adopt-A Trail, so spanning over one hundred and twenty-five miles, we do boast an extensive network of trails that goes through pretty much all of the city of Palm Coast. This Adopt-A Trail program recognizes residents' invaluable role in safeguarding these trails and making sure they remain pristine for all users. And again, we do look for these Adopt-A Trail participants to, you know, report to us some vandalism, anything, small debris, if there's anything we need to cut back, things like that. We rely on these participants to help us maintain our trails as well. And then we look at the shoreline. So Adopt-A Shoreline program acknowledges the significance of our waterfront areas and the responsibility that comes with our upkeep. Participants are not encouraged but empowered to engage in activities that actively contribute to maintain the pristine nature of these vital spaces. Residents take a role in guardians ensuring that Long Creek Nature Preserve and Waterfront Park remain inviting, clean, and free of litter.
So we also have Adopt-A Roadways that are available. Residents who adopt the road contribute to a cleaner city by adopting sections of major roadways along residential areas. Although, through their participation, residents are empowered to address litter head-on. They're also encouraged to pick up items or notify us of items. They can leave those items bagged at a stop sign, and our Public Works Crew can come around and remove those so that you don't even have to transport the items that you collect. We also have medians that are available for adoption. The Adopt-A Median Program represents more than just an opportunity to plant trees in that median area. This is not our major medians, you're not Belt Air, not the Parkway, but in our residential areas. So that little patch of grass in your community, in the middle of the road, you can plant trees, add flowers, still within our guidelines, which are presented to the residents at time of adoption. But they also receive those tools in order to help maintain and keep that median beautiful in their neighborhood. So littering is not only an environmental concern, but it's also a violation of the law that carries significant legal consequences. With our collaboration with Flagler County Sheriff's Office, they seek to highlight those very real legal implications that residents may face for littering in our community. And we firmly believe that informed residents make better decisions. And by educating our residents of these consequences, we aim to encourage responsible behavior to uphold the cleanliness of our city. The legal ramifications for littering in Palm Coast are pretty substantial. Individuals caught littering up to fifteen pounds can face fines up to a hundred and fifty dollars, and for instances of littering exceeding those fifteen pounds, the consequences may be more severe, may reach up to a thousand dollars, and the offense being classified as a first-degree misdemeanor. The consequences are aimed at deterring litter and emphasizing the gravity of this offense and its impact on the community. Our Communications Department is working closely with Flagler County Sheriff's Office to launch an awareness campaign that ensures the public is well-informed about the legal and monetary consequences of littering. And by collaborating on this initiative, we seek to foster a culture of responsibility and accountability. In closing, it's truly inspiring to witness the collaborative efforts of our Public Works, Parks and Rec, Communications Departments, Flagler County Sheriff's Office, and all employees who make a general contribution to litter removal in our neighborhood, even if that's somebody who works at City Hall and picks it up off the sidewalk. It's a literal effort. Is there, let's see here, it's a literal effort, it's not just a catchy phrase, it encapsulates the collective spirit that drives to make a positive change. By working together, we shine a light on the undeniable truth that is, Keep Palm Coast Clean is a shared responsibility. Are there any questions for you guys?
City council, how many questions? I think it's obvious, the message here is that this is a responsibility of everyone's. Obviously, city staff is the first line of defense, but along with the sheriff and with our residents and citizens, we should all be aware and we should all work together. And I would really urge everyone to come out for the waterway cleanup. That's one of the, it's an especially fun event because families bring the kids and they get to spend a day together, learn about the waterway cleanup, and it bodes very well for the community as a whole. So I certainly will be there, and I look forward to awarding the top prizes for the best items that are found as they're doing their search around the community. So thank you, staff, for all that you do to keep this going, and city council will do its best to drum up as many more volunteers as we possibly can. So thank you all.
And you guys also have the absolute best t-shirts for the waterway cleanup, three years in a row, very good.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hyder, if you would be so kind as deliver your proclamation now?
Good evening again. So our next proclamation will be presented in honor of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration sponsors National Recovery Month. Would you like to come up?
Please, ladies, come on up, come on up.
Whereas, each September, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration sponsors National Recovery Month. And whereas, the two thousand and twenty-three National Recovery Month theme, recovery is for everyone. Every person, every family, every community explores how integrated care and strong community sense of purpose and leadership contribute to effective treatments that sustain the recovery of individuals experiencing substance and other disorder, disorders. And whereas, substance and disorder is preventable. Treatment is effective and people can recover. And whereas, to help more people with lived experience achieve and sustain recovery, the U.S. Department of Health experience achieve and sustain recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, HHS, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMHSA, and Flagler Opens Arms Recovery Services invite all residents of Palm Coast to participate in National Recovery Month. And whereas the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration encourages residents to participate in National Recovery Month to learn more about how to help people achieve and sustain long-term recovery. And whereas Recovery Month celebrates the gain made by those living in recovery. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of September 2023 be officially designated as National Recovery Month. Signed this fifth day of September 2023, Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and Mayor David Alphen, City of Palm Coast. Thank you so much.
So we are very excited. This is our third time to come and receive this proclamation. We were born in 2019, and we've come here every year since. And today, we have members of our board and our leadership team. And so we are going to give you a brief overview of where we've come, thanks to the support of so many of you. So I think what we should do now is get a picture.
Do we have a presentation now?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you. I think I should probably face them.
No, no, that's fine. Keep it the way it is. Good, good, good. Yes, yes, absolutely.
My back's against the wall.
That's okay. I can hear you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pam Rataolo, Executive Director of Flagler Open Arms Recovery Services. And tonight, what we thought would be fun, and it's gonna be not long or boring, it's gonna be fun, to let you see what has happened since the first time we were here to receive a proclamation. We are one of four hundred RCOs, Recovery Community Organizations, in the United States, and one of twenty in Florida. All of the Recovery Community Organizations have an underlying mission of, well, you're gonna see in just a minute. So the first thing we want to talk about is outreach, and our outreach leader is going to give us a brief overview.
Hey, everybody. How are you doing tonight? My name's Eric Honi. I am the outreach leader for Flagler Open Arms Recovery Service. I've been with Flagler Oars for about eight months now. And it has been an interesting journey. And, and I've learned more in the last eight months about myself than I have, I think, in the last forty-seven years of my life, which is pretty magical. And part of that is doing the outreach with Flagler Open Arms Recovery. And, and what that is, is we get to spread into our communities the lifelines to help people in recovery, the, the way to find their way to recovery. And we do that a couple of different ways, through education and through, we do some table events, and we have a wonderful festival coming up on the sixteenth from three PM to nine PM. We're gonna have vendors, musicians, food, and it's just gonna be all about recovery. So please make sure you come out and, and join us. But I, I think that my, my favorite thing that we have, that I have been given the opportunity to develop, is we, we just purchased a, an RV, which I like to call a recovery vehicle. And we get to go out into the communities now and, and bring recovery to the community. As most of you are aware, transportation, public transportation is non-existent in Palm Coast and, and most of Flagler County. And that's just because of lack of funding and maybe necessity as well. But we get to, we get to bring, we get to bring help to people now. And we get to collaborate with other organizations such as Department of Health. And, you know, we're, we're gonna be doing a few different, hopefully, vaccination clinics where we can go out into rural areas and to areas where people may not have transportation to get up there and do that. So it's been a fun journey. I've talked for too long, and I'm gonna pass it back to Pam. So thank you guys very much for your support.
Thanks, Eric. And so the other thing that we do is distribute Narcan. And interesting that when we first started doing it, people like you all went, no, 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 because they automatically thought it was for addicts. And now, when we go and distribute Narcan and do Narcan training all over this county, we can't hold on to enough Narcan. So you'll see up there, if you look at the slide, you'll see that we have gone from 2022, January, six hundred boxes, little boxes of Narcan, up to now. We do, last, this past July, twenty-five hundred boxes. We always have Narcan available, and don't think it's just for people who are struggling with addiction. It's also for your grandparents who lose track of their pain medication. And we have plenty of it and are always, always glad to give it away. So the next thing we're gonna talk about for a minute is education. So what happened was, I became the president of the first board, and the only thing I really knew was education. That was my background. And we were born in the time of COVID. So we couldn't get to people, but what we could do is do online education. And by doing that online education, we did little, little bits. The state heard about us. We started 2019 doing little tidbits. We called them Lunch and Learns. We still have them today. And then, by 2021, the state offered us a grant. First time I've ever been someplace where somebody called me and asked me if I wanted a grant. But, so now, our education continues. We go out, we offer our services to all kinds of different organizations, clubs. We do, our newest thing is Project Rebirth, where we're working with the vets who are in recovery. And then we do RAP plans, and we will train anybody. So if your organization, or you, or your friends want any training regarding recovery, we're here for you. And then the other thing, and Savannah's gonna talk about this, we do a lot of policy advocating.
We do. So that's part of the reason we're here today is advocating for our community and those of us in recovery. So we have, like Pam said, been doing proclamations for the last three years. So that's advocacy in a localized level. We've also been to Tallahassee two times this year to meet with House Representatives and legislation to inform them about what's going on in their communities. And we have seen some great policy changes regarding recovery. A lot of barriers eliminated for background checks for peers have been passed. And our governor has actually funded a lot of these positions this year. So we're really excited to see what that looks like, including an office specifically for recovery. Pam and I also made it to Washington DC this year, and we were able to meet with legislators like Marco Rubio and Rick Scott. And it's, it's been an incredible process, and it is one of our other pillars that we focus on as a recovery community organization.
I'm gonna skip over the awards and move right to what the core of our work, and Hope's gonna talk about that, is we've gone from just plain education to actually being able to work with people one-on-one-on-one. We are not clinicians, so we are peer-led, and everyone here is a peer. So we'll keep going. Our board, two of whom are here tonight. Leadership team, you've seen them. And then let's talk, let's move on to our peers. And then Hope is going to talk about, let's go one more. One more. Hope is gonna talk a little bit about the intensity of the peer work.
My name's Hope, and I'm a woman in long-term recovery. So that right there kind of says it all. I'm a peer specialist, so that means I have that lived experience as a person with substance abuse disorder. I'm able to break down those barriers with individuals as not a clinician, as not a therapist, as not as a doctor or a counselor. I'm able to relate with them in a way that those are not. I'm able to help them, support them in gaining and working towards a recovery capital scale, encouraging them to be a part of the community and finding that aspect for them, as well as focusing on the other part of, of the recovery capital scale, which is their human and their physical, making sure that they have the means that they need, like the appropriate doctors and the appropriate counselors and the appropriate clinicians. As well as support, working on and encouraging them to find recovery goals and helping them to achieve those. We base everything off of SAMPA, which SAMPA, oh, wrong slide. The definition of recovery, recovery is for everybody, is a process. Recovery is a process of change through which individuals improve their health and wellness, lives, lives a self-directed life and strives to reach their full potential. It's that simple. It's one little thing at a time. We're there as a support to help them achieve those goals.
Thanks, Hope. What, what gets me excited is that we now see over fifty people a week, thanks to these guys and their teams, where they're working with people and guiding them to recovery. So thank you so much for your time, and thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Councilman Clufus will now deliver the next proclamation about Constitution Week.
All right. Do we have anybody in attendance for Constitution Week proclamation? Anyone from, we have the Daughters of the American Revolution. No? Anybody? Oh, hey. All right, pardon, pardon my back. Whereas on September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven, the United States Constitution was signed by thirty-nine brave men who changed the course of history by establishing the many rights and freedoms that we, the people, enjoy today. Whereas to perpetuate the declarations stated on the United States Constitution, the Daughters of the American Revolution Incorporated in eighteen ninety-six, for its members to dedicate themselves to historical preservation, promotion of education, service to veterans, and encouragement of patriotic endeavors. And whereas in nineteen fifty-six, the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, were instrumental in convincing Congress to pass a law that directs the President of the United States to annually designate the third week in September as National Constitution Week. And whereas the citizens of the United States of America will this year be celebrating the two-hundred-thirty-sixth anniversary of the signing of the Constitution with a wide array of inspiring and educational activities. And whereas Palm Coast is fortunate to be the location for the Old Kings Highway Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, an ambitious and dedicated group of women who are devoted to fostering knowledge of and appreciation for our Constitution and the inalienable rights it affords to all Americans. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of September seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, be officially designated as Constitution Day in the City of Palm Coast, and reminds all citizens of the responsibility to protect, defend, and preserve our nation's Constitution as the basis of our great heritage and foundation for our democratic way of life. Signed this fifth day of September twenty-twenty-three, Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and City of Palm Coast, Florida, David Alphen, Mayor.
On behalf of the Old Kings Highway Chapter, thank you very much for this. He just told you all about what our group is about, so I won't go with that, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pontieri will conclude the proclamations with two more this evening. So.
Is anybody here for prostate cancer awareness recognition? So while you're making your way up, this one is very near and dear to me. I recently lost an uncle to prostate cancer, so I'm very grateful to the city for recognizing such a terrible disease and the impact that it can have on people and their families. Thank you for being here. Whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer, and the second-leading cause of cancer related deaths among men. And whereas this is approximately, this year, approximately two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, three hundred men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States, and roughly thirty-four thousand, seven hundred will die this year from the disease, which is one man every fifteen minutes. And whereas one in eight men are diagnosed with prostate cancer, African-American men are at the highest risk for the disease, with a rate of one in seven men, and African-American men are two-point-one times more likely to die from the disease. And whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and preventing and protecting our families. And whereas all men are at risk for prostate cancer, we encourage the citizens of Palm Coast, government agencies, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and other interest groups to join in activities that will increase awareness of what we can all do to prevent and cure prostate cancer. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the, that September two thousand twenty-three be officially designated as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Signed this fifth day of September two thousand twenty-three by our city clerk and Mayor David Alphen.
Hi, everyone. So it is my honor and pleasure on behalf of Avon Health Palm Coast and Avon Health Palm Coast Parkway to introduce you to Dr. Ally Torchie. He is our newest employed urologist at the hospital in Palm Coast, and he is also serving currently as our first and only robotically-trained urologist in Flagler County. So he comes to us with a wealth of experience and is part of our intentional growth to continue spreading the healing ministry of Christ and serving the growing needs of this growing community here in Palm Coast. So with that said, I will turn it over to Dr. Torchie to talk to you a little bit about the work that he does and why raising awareness for this particular type of cancer is so important.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for attending. I'm here to talk, raise awareness about prostate cancer, not only as a urologist, as a person who saw his uncle suffer and pass away from prostate cancer due to late diagnosis. The whole point of September awareness is that ask men to take care of themselves, because prostate cancer is a slow-growing, most of the time with no symptoms. But do not forget, is the most common internal malignancy in U.S. males. It is the second-leading cause of death due to cancer in U.S. males. So the most important thing about prostate cancer is early diagnosis, is a screening. If you are a male between the age of forty-five to seventy-five, go to your primary care doctor, go to your urologist, get yourself checked for prostate cancer. go to your urologist, get yourself checked for prostate cancer. There are several methods for screening for prostate cancer. One of them is just a simple blood work, just checking a protein in your blood that is produced by the prostate. The other one is a test which is a digital rectal exam. The urologist will check your prostate, since it's in front of the rectum, and may check for any nodules, any mass, any abnormality. The next thing is the MRI of the prostate. Right now at the Advent Health Palm Coast Parkway and Advent Health, we have the MRI of prostate, which will show any abnormality in the prostate, and it will help me as a urologist, if I see any abnormality, to go and precisely biopsy that mass and lesion for you and treat the prostate cancer and plan the surgical treatment of it, if needed. As I said, prostate cancer is a slow-growing. Most of the time, it doesn't have any symptoms. You will not know about it, but at the advanced stages, it can show itself as difficulty urinating, difficulty waking up 10 times at night to go urinate. And you see males like that and you never think about it, seeing blood in your urine, seeing blood in the semen. That's something that you should pay attention to it. And if you have any of these symptoms, do not blame it on aging. There is a reason behind it. Get yourself checked. As a man, you should pay attention to these symptoms. We have other diagnostic tests. We have treatment tools. What are the risk factors for the prostate cancer? If you have a family member who had breast cancer or prostate cancer, you have a higher risk of having prostate cancer in you. Advanced age, as we talk about it, the more at the age, the higher the chance of having prostate cancer. And if you were in the war zone, you were in the war zone with Agent Orange, just do not forget that will predispose you to prostate cancer. Treatment-wise, there are many treatments for prostate cancer. Many times, we don't even treat it. If it's low-grade, low-stage, there is no need for treatment. You just need to observe it and make sure it's not getting higher stage into the higher stages. But there are surgical treatments. We have the robotic treatments for the prostate cancer now at the Advent Health. We offer it, most of the time, we do it with a robot, the prostate is removed, you are mostly discharged from hospital same day. Most of the time, no pain, and that's the only treatment? No. There is, if you prefer no surgical treatment, we have the best radiation therapists in the world here. We can treat it with radiation beam, kill the cancer cells with the radiation. We have the newest generation of immunotherapy, which is using your own immune cells to kill the cancer cells. We have that treatment right now. And as a guy coming from Johns Hopkins, I promise you, there is no diagnostic, no therapeutic, no surgical instruments that they have at Johns Hopkins or Harvard or MD Anderson, that we don't have it from August 2023 at Advent Health. So we are here, available to offer the diagnosis and the treatment to all men. If you have a loved one or you are a male between the age of 45 to 75, get yourself checked and we will be more than happy to treat you as a family. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
We have one final proclamation this evening, which I think is very appropriate. So I ask for your attention just for another moment, if you would proceed, please.
And is anybody here for National Preparedness Month?
I think we all are.
Yes. It is Florida. This one's a little easier to get through. It highlights the importance of community, our police and fire agencies and all of our volunteers and our city staff.
Whereas the safety and well-being of the residents of the city of Palm Coast are of utmost importance and the city is committed to ensuring resilience in the face of emergencies and disasters. And whereas National Preparedness Month is observed annually in September, providing an opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of being prepared for all types of emergencies, including natural disasters, public health crises, and others. And whereas the city of Palm Coast recognizes that being prepared is a shared responsibility and that collaboration among government agencies, nonprofit organizations, private sector partners, and community members is essential to effectively respond to and recover from emergencies. And whereas National Preparedness Month encourages all residents to take simple steps to prepare for emergencies, including creating a family emergency plan, building emergency kits, staying informed about potential hazards, and participating in preparedness events and training. And whereas by raising awareness and taking proactive steps toward preparedness, the city of Palm Coast aims to enhance the safety, resilience, and overall quality of life for its residents. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that September 2023 be officially designated as National Preparedness Month in the city of Palm Coast and encourage all residents, businesses, and community organizations to participate in preparedness activities, educate themselves and others about potential hazards, and work together to build a more resilient and prepared community. Signed this fifth day of September 2023 by our city clerk and Mayor Alvin.
Let me first say thank you to Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members for acknowledging that this month is National Preparedness Month. Not only is it National Preparedness Month, but is also, September 10th, this Sunday, I believe it is, is actually also the peak of the Atlantic hurricane season, which is, which is very much near and dear to all of us here in Florida because Florida does seem to be unfortunately quite at risk for hurricanes. And as we all know, last week Hurricane Adalia hit the west coast of Florida. Did impact us a little bit. We had some, you know, close to tropical storm, fortunately it wasn't a big issue for us, but it was quite catastrophic to the Big Bend region of Florida. Actually, it was only a few hours ago, I just got back from spending a week over there, helping our neighbors and just seeing the intense impacts that a storm like that can happen. You know, while we haven't truly seen a large storm here in Flagler County, truly ever in its history, every area that's had a big storm in recent years has said the same things. You know, Hurricane Michael, a few years ago in the Panhandle, Panhandle had never had a category five hurricane until they did. You know, we all live in an amazing paradise. I'm also a very proud resident of Palm Coast, and I wouldn't want to live anywhere else, but at the same token, the trade-off with anybody living in our wonderful communities, the fact that we are at risk of many kinds of different events, but hurricanes is one of those that can be very destructive. So in honor of National Preparedness Month, I definitely want to encourage all of our residents and visitors to make sure they have a disaster kit that you can live off of the grid, as the kids like to say today, for up to, up to seven days. Also make sure they have a way, have a plan in place, so if a hurricane strikes or any kind of emergency strikes, if you have to evacuate your home or even stay in your home, that you have a plan in place of how to communicate with your friends and family and that you know where you're going to go if you have to seek shelter. The third thing in our, we kind of have a four-pronged mantra. The third thing is make sure you're informed. And we encourage all of our residents to sign up for something we call Alert Flagler. It's a free county-wide alert notification system where you can get emergency alerts tailored to your home and you choose the type of alerts you want to get. And the fourth and final thing is get involved. We have a great county-wide program called Community Emergency Response Team. It's a free course we put on for any residents of Flagler County three times a year. Our next class actually starts in a couple of weeks over at the Emergency Operations Center at the county government complex. It's a 30-hour class and it teaches you how to be more prepared, how to, we even cover basic fire safety, emergency medical care, and all that. So we definitely encourage our residents to take advantage of those opportunities. And thank you again, Mayor and Council, for acknowledging this month.
Really quick, before Jonathan Lord gets out of here, we're just so lucky to have such a wonderful partner in the county emergency management. He's done so much to advocate for Palm Coast. He's helped to acquire, if you live in a pep area, he's done a lot to help make sure that your life is not as bad as it could have been if you run out of power. He continually, continuously advocates for us. He's a great partner and really helping everyone in the community to make sure that we pull together in those tough times. Additionally, I wanted to just recognize Jared and Tim who are up here. Both of them, their normal hat is not emergency manager. Tim wears so many hats, I worry he's going to get a blister on his head. But they, they, when it's time for an emergency management, your city staff and Tim and Jared are great representatives. They're all cross-trained into multiple things and it's all hands on deck to make sure that we're able to get ourselves back to normal as fast as possible. So thank you tremendously to Jonathan for being such a great partner and for all of our staff who helps us to make sure that we're prepared for an emergency so that we can get back to the great life we have here in Palm Coast.
Reynolds, I need you up here too.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Hey Jonathan, thank you. Make this one go away, all right? Make this one go away.
While everybody's getting seated, I appreciate everyone's attention for, you know, a large number of proclamations this evening, but let me say this, that you heard this evening from dozens of people that have donated their heart and their soul. They've woven all of their being into the city of Palm Coast to make sure that our community is as good as it can be. So I would ask each of you to remember those that spoke tonight, those that received proclamation tonight. These are the folks that really make our community special. So when you see them, congratulate them and thank them for all they've done to invest in our, in our community. So with that, we'll move on to item number F on our agenda, which will be, I'm sorry, G, which will be ordinances of a second read. And number eight, counselor, if you would read that in for us, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, admitting the official zoning map is established in section 2.06 of the city of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. For a 40-acre or less parcel of certain real property described as four tax parcel identification numbers located at southeast corner of Belter Boulevard and Citation Boulevard, and being more particularly described in the attached exhibit A, from general commercial or COM-2 to master plan development MPD zoning district approving the Belter Estates Master Plan Development Agreement, providing for severability conflicts and effective date. Mayor, Council, this is the second reading of this quasi judicial matter. If there have been any ex parte communications on this matter since the first reading, those should be disclosed at this time.
Anyone have any contact?
We have not. I'll confirm with Councilwoman Pontieri when she returns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any ex parte?
Very good. Okay, so we're good, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council Ray Tyner, Deputy Chief Development Officer. When city council approved it, this item at the first reading on August 15th, there were several comments and suggestions from city council that directed staff to go back and work with the applicant on. So Mr. Hoover will have an abbreviated presentation to discuss those changes that were incorporated into the development agreement.
Good evening, everyone. Phil Hoover from the Planning Division. The projects located at the southeast corner of Belter and Citation, they want to build 275 townhomes, a commercial center, and a city dog park. The council did approve this by a 4-1 vote back on August 15th. The three things that council requested the applicant to review with staff was, one, have the commercial parcel, general commercial parcel pad ready when the infrastructure is done on the adjoining residential project. To have some of the townhome lots meet the multifamily standards with minimum lot widths of 25 feet and minimum lot sizes of 2,500 square feet. And three, provide some units for workforce housing or assist in some manner regarding this. And we did meet with the applicant. In the MPD agreement, there is tight language that requires the, it says COM-1 parcel. It should say COM-2 parcel will be pad-ready when the infrastructure is complete on the adjoining residential. The applicant said they will have 80 end units or all the end units, there's about 80, will meet the multifamily standards of the minimum lot width of 25 feet and the minimum lot sizes of 2,500 square feet. And the applicant pointed out as far as affordable housing, that the project will have platted lots where the purchase price will be significantly less than even 40 or 50-foot wide detached homes. And then their HOA fees, which are figured in for a mortgage application, those will be substantially less than a single-family detached home. So this will assist, let's say, our new residents, somebody young coming to the area that wants to move here to get their own platted lot home. So you'd be getting 1,497 square feet, which is a reasonably good size. And that would have a one-car garage, other ones are a little bit larger, that would have a two-car garage. And the applicant's team is in attendance if there's any questions.
So let me understand, the applicant has a presentation or a summary or no? They're here for questions?
They're just here for questions, if you have any.
So if I may start with Councilwoman Pontieri. You had some questions last go-around on this? Do you want to start, start us off?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, and to the applicant for the work that you've done to make this project, I think, a little bit more compatible with the city of Palm Coast. I appreciate that. My question is, I know before we were at 275 lots, I think, that were intended for this project. And making those end units the correct minimum, which is a 25-feet lot space, are we still at the same amount of residential units or did that go down at all?
Correct. They're still able to do that with 275 is what they've advised me.
Okay, is there some type of explanation as to how we got there? I just want to make, I mean, are we just reducing yard size? What are we doing to achieve that?
It was pretty simple. The, there was actually a 10-foot, I guess you would call it a green space area next to all the end units that they provided. And so they're modifying the lot sizes so that the 10-foot green area would be included in the project.
So we're getting rid of green space in order to accommodate the lot sizes?
Well, well, they had extra land to be able to accommodate that. They would, they would do that. And the amount, and I mean, they still meet the impervious purview ratio and the open space requirements for, for the area.
Okay, so it still does meet the green space requirements then?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then the only thing I just want to, I know, I see the highlighted and underlined portions are what were added and amended specifically with regards to the commercial parcel being developed at a certain time and also the end units being that wider space. But I want to make sure there's just not contradiction in what we're voting on here today. And it seems that a couple of the pages still say that the lots can be a minimum of 19 feet wide. Is there any way that we, if we do move to approve this, that we can eliminate some of that contradictory language? So for instance, if you go to page four, it says it allows for a minimum 19-foot wide townhomes with the options of a single and double-car garage and first-floor bedroom?
So is that a reference to the structure size or the lot are you talking about?
It says, it's under section three, which is approval.
I believe it's talking about the structure size.
That could be. If that's the case, then that's fine. I just want to make sure we don't have contradictions because we did add these things for a specific reason.
That section is just project description, so it's just a real overhaul. A big, I guess you'd say, view from. you'd say, view from a higher perspective, and then when we get into the standards, it gets more specific.
Well, and I, I do agree with you, but if you look on page five even, again, it says platted lots will be a minimum of 19 feet in width and 90 feet in depth, even if we need to add like a footnote just to clarify that, I think...
Go ahead, the applicant maybe can answer, go ahead.
Good evening, Joey Posey, 420 South Nova Daytona Beach Attorney for the landowner, and if, if it's easier to us stipulating to that addition, that yes, that, that's the intent of what was brought forward to you with our recommendation for edits, so the end product needs to reflect that, so if there's a stated condition on the adoption ordinance that, that has to reflect that, then we're fine with that.
Okay, yeah, I, I just appreciate that, just for clarity.
Yeah, we can, we can specify that the 19 feet are related only to interior lots on that page five.
That would be great, I'd appreciate that, just for clarity.
So, staff has that note, you can go ahead and correct that, so we'll, we'll, we'll assume that that's been corrected as of this evening, okay? Council members, questions?
I have none.
I'd just like to say thank you for that presentation, and I'd like to thank the developer for helping us to move in the direction of bringing forth our workforce housing and taking that seriously and taking it into consideration for the young people and individuals that are looking forward to moving here to Palm Coast. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Winpanteri.
I would just basically concur with everything that's been said and just appreciate the reception of the additional nuances from this previous hearing, so thank you for taking the advice and making certain adjustments.
Okay, I'll, I'll hold my comments. I will open up this item to the public at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this item on the agenda at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll come back to the dais. Any final comments? The only comment I would make, and I want to be careful and cautious here, it's outside of the guardrails of what we are actually voting on, but I applaud your interest in finding, in developing housing that will be affordable for those first responders, the doctor that was here before, his staff, and all of those folks that would very much like to provide the services that we so desperately need. So, I can only wish you the best success and hope that that project, you know, results in that, even though that's outside of what our discussion is about this evening, just to be clear, but thank you for that. So, with that, I would ask for a motion from City Council.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor to approve the project with the adjustments that were discussed. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second from councillor Winpanteri. Any additional discussion? So, with that, I will go ahead and ask for a, a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councillor Winpanteri?
Yes.
Councillor Clufus?
Aye.
Councillor Winpanteri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0.
That will move forward to the ordinances of the second read, item number nine, if council would read that in for me, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City Council, City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the 2023 amended and restated master plan development, or MPD, development agreement for the 89-acre, more or less Marina Village Master Plan Development MPD, but limited to amending the portion of the MPD located east of Colbert Lane and north of Roberts Road, providing for a reduction in commercial gross floor area from 160,500 square feet to 1,003,000 square feet, providing for an increase in residential units from 663 to 1,085, providing for revised development standards, providing for legislative findings and intent, and for severability, conflicts, and effective date. Again, Mr. Mayor, council, this is the second reasoning, a reading of a quasi judicial matter, therefore, if there have been any ex parte communications since the first reading of this ordinance, those should be disclosed at this time.
I received several emails that I confirmed receipt of, and several neighbors, but nothing that'll impact my voting here tonight.
Councillor Winpanteri?
Nothing.
Okay, that's all we have.
Thank you, Mayor, again, Ray Tyner, Deputy Chief Development Officer. This item was approved on August 15th, and again, staff has a brief presentation to reflect some changes within the development agreement through our discussions with City Council and, and questions they have, so Mr. Hoover will have that presentation to highlight those items.
The, altogether, it's the 89-acre project at Roberts Road in Colbert Lane, and I'll point out that changes for the MPD only affect the 67 acres on the east side of the road. And the City Council asked the applicant and staff to look at four different items. One was ensure that the kiln dust data demonstrates the project will meet all applicable environmental requirements, and we've also put all those studies were attached to the agenda. Number two, ensure that, that open space on track three will remain open to the public. Third item was provide assurances that we will have some waterfront mixed uses, and those will actually occur. And then four, the same thing, again, that the multifamily units, some of those meet the minimum lot width and lot size standards of 2,500 square feet. So, the updated MPD agreements, we put in there that the, the full-service marina will have gas services for boats, a ship store and related marina services will always be open to the public. The owner will provide and maintain a minimum of one sit-down waterfront restaurant. Three, that the public open space area, we, we changed the name on this to lawn event area, which is a little more common term, I've been advised, and it would be a minimum of one acre in size and would remain open to the public for special events. And to encourage the special events, Mr. Tyner actually came up with some specifics on how to make this utilized without having to come to City Council every time they want to do a special event. So, if it's a moderate-level special event, then we can do this administratively, so that speeds things up and makes it a little bit simpler for them. If it's a major one, it would come back to the City Council, so that would be one with over a thousand people.
Yeah, let me just, I'm sorry, we have a special events ordinance that wouldn't go to City Council, they would follow and go to our special events team, so it would not go to City Council, I just want to be clear. Basically, what this does is, it's kind of like a European village where, you know, within their development agreement, they're, they're able to have special events, maybe markets and that type of thing, activities, like, it may be very appropriate, like, for boat, boat show or something along that nature of that marina, so what the added language does, it allows them to have these events without specifically coming to the city every time for a special event. Now, if they reach a certain threshold of an event, then they would have, you know, there's public safety involved and it's not affiliated with, with their project, then they would have to come for a special event.
So, Ray, let me just ask, so, these events, regardless of the side, are the responsibility of the landowner or the developer, they're not the responsibility of the city, is that correct?
That's correct, that's right, sir, yes.
Okay.
Responsibility of the owner.
But they're offering the city a communication in terms of, of events that we'd like to see there?
Well, it would be, they're kind of affiliated with a marina or open event, so, so the idea is, you know, if they have a market on a Saturday, they're able to have a market to bring people there, right?
But it's their land, their stuff, their expense.
Their land, their stuff, right, that's right. Now, if they have fireworks, they have fireworks and some of those health, safety things, absolutely, they have to come to the City of Palm Coast to go through that process, and that there's a certain threshold of, of people, you know, large gatherings, of course, there, there's some thresholds where they'd have to come through a special events process.
Okay, so, just to be clear, there's no burden on city staff regarding future events there?
That's correct.
Let's see, number five, they modified the dry boat storage stackhouse height limit would go from 60 feet to 70 feet, and the sixth one was that the, eliminate the multifamily uses on all of track six except for the northwest corner of track six, where multifamily uses would be allowed with the commercial, and you can see that on this slide right here. And you can see track six is rather large, and so the track six area is probably maybe 15 or 20% of that. And you can, just want to show where the boat stackhouse was, and then the area where the MFR2 uses would be allowed, and so the applicant's development team is here, and so if you have any questions specific, not for staff, Mr. Shmento can answer those for you.
No presentation, just for questions, okay?
I have none.
Questions?
I have a question for staff first, actually. On page 19 of 37, why are we not requiring a subdivision master plan per our land development code?
The, we have enough data shown on these plans here, so the, the city engineers have already looked at this plan and decided that it was, there's enough detail there to accomplish that for a subdivision master plan.
So, let me just add on to that, so, you know, in our, in our process, subdivision process, we require three stages, subdivision master plan. Basically, what that is, before you go to the preliminary plat and a final plat, it's really a planning exercise to look at, you know, if it's going to work from a planning, your buffers and that type of thing, so they provided enough information to cover what the requirements would be for subdivision master plan. So, with this detail, we would skip that process and go right to preliminary plat. It's, it's not necessary for them to do, do a step that's already been completed.
So, in that step, though, of doing a subdivision master plan, once that's presented and accepted by staff, is the applicant held to that, whatever they present at that time?
I mean, they'll be held to this general plan, yes, but things can shift once you do start doing the hard engineering and, and that type of work.
I think one of my concerns with what I'm looking at and what's in writing is specifically on track three, one of the reasons we talked about the green space in the manner that we did last time was because we wanted this beautiful green space to be right by the water, and the language of the agreement currently doesn't do that. It says that the exact configuration and location may be changed within track three, so that allows the applicant to stack up more condos or townhomes in front of the water, and then you take away the appeal of this beautiful green space.
Well, I say, I, we, we get that, and I think the development agreement complates that that, this is going to be a waterfront type of open space, right, and not blocking that area, so we can hold that exactly, because that's called out specifically in the development agreement of those requirements for that open space and where that location is, so if they're, you know, going to move it way back off that track and have it where it's not applicable to events and that type of thing, then that's when we would have a discussion with them and utilize the, the, the development agreement that's approved here today to say, hey, this is kind of what you said. I mean, the intent is you can shift a little bit, but, you know, you're pretty set on that, on that location. This, this intent of the green space is to be a waterfront feature.
Okay, so I'll look to staff then to hold the applicant's feet to the fire on that, because I do think that that is an incredible, incredibly important piece of this, and the intent of this project, I think, is circled around the water, you know, the water element of this. So, I don't have any other questions for the applicant. Mayor, I do have their comments, but I'll hold them for other questions from colleagues.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll come back around. Councillor, if, keep me out of trouble here for a minute, Bill. You've had a dialogue or a conversation with our good neighbors planned, with our important employer that's nearby, so that, that, we've made, you've made an accom, the planners have made an accommodation in terms of the configuration of the development, so that everybody's on board with this?
Yeah, I think, I, I think the intent of, in, talking about compatibility with the neighbor next door, the boat maker.
Boston Whaler.
Yes, so, having, you know, the multifamily component and the residential component out adjacent to that facility makes this definitely a better project for, for everybody, for the residents and for the neighbors.
Okay, and I'm stepping outside of the, the boundaries, I just want to make sure that the whole area there is, is, is on board, good. And can somebody finally tell us what is going to be done with that smokestack?
I see the recommended action, there is a...
I mean, it doesn't take a lot of creativity, but I get an awful lot of questions, can you tell me?
Sure, that's just intended to be a marketing amenity, you know, that's all we'll paint it, and make it look like a lighthouse.
A lighthouse, what a great idea, thank you. I just wanted to put, get that on the record. Comments?
Yep, I, I see that part of the recommended action is that prior to construction, the city received proof that the site's cement kiln dust remediation plan has been completed and approved by the state regulatory board, am I reading that correctly? Okay.
They provided the data, and I know that was a topic, but, you know, they provided the, the data was in your package, and this is a zoning process, so, you know, as far as the site plan goes to, we would, we would still require that information.
Okay. Councillor, all right, so then let me, and we'll come back around, let me open this up to the public, are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this ordinance at this time? Yes, sir?
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast, I just have one question. The, the marina where it says 200 boats stackhouse, does that mean that it has the capability of having 200 boats in there? Because if it does, God forbid there's a fire in there, especially with all those fiberglass boats, it's going to be a hell of a fire, and I just want to make sure that, you know, how many boats are going to be in there and there's enough fire protection?
Councillor, you want to address that?
Okay. How many boats are going to be in there? Okay.
It'll be a 200-boat storage facility, be it called a dry stack, there's a similar one across the canal by an associated developer, and it will meet all requirements of code, including fire protection.
Can I get a nod from the back there? Okay, very good, thank you. All right, are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? So, let me come back, I'll close public comment and come back to the dais, councillor Winpanteri, do you have some additional comments you'd like to make at this time?
I do. I, I have a real issue, and I, I'll preface my statements by this, I appreciate the applicant and staff going back to the drawing board and trying to make what is already a really cool project better for the citizens of Palm Coast and for our neighboring city of Flagler Beach, because they will be detrimentally affected by this. I think that you all have made some efforts to make it a more palatable project, but we are doubling the residential units nearly, and we are eliminating nearly 60,000 square feet of commercial. This is specifically what we should not be doing if we're trying to preserve Palm Coast quality of life. I have a real problem with this. So, this was advertised as being a self-sufficient MPD where people can live, work, and play, and what we have turned it into is a residential, just free-for-all, where we're going, we've guaranteed a restaurant and a marina ship store, which is great, but this will not, this is not sufficient for the amount of residents that we have placed in here for people to live, work, and play. We already have people leaving this county to go work in other places, because there's nowhere for them to work. We just approved a development that is going against our LDC in order to make units and lot sizes smaller so that we can make them cheaper for our workforce. We should be providing better-paying jobs and more work rather than shrinking residences and packing them in because they can't afford to live in a Palm Coast home. So, I understand this is a really cool project, to councillor Clufus's point last meeting, he said, you know, this is an excellent project, it has some great potential for us and for the development on the north side, and I agree with you, councillor, but it's good as is, it doesn't need to be amended, we don't need to increase the residence that this, we've already increased them once. Am I wrong, staff, didn't we, haven't we already increased the residential units in this development that was originally intended for?
Correct, I believe that was in 2019.
Right, so we've already done it once, here we are doing it again, it's like our LDC has completely gone out the window. What is the point in having a code that is specifically in place to protect the quality of life here in Palm Coast if we don't follow it? And then we've created an entire commission with a multi, you know, all these other cities, so we've got the City of Flagler Beach, the City of Beverly Beach, the City of Benel, the City of Palm Coast, and the county, all trying to work together to figure out how we're going to, from an infrastructure standpoint, consume and provide for the amount of residents that are all coming to Flagler Beach, that are coming to the city, that are eating at our restaurants and using our roads and all... restaurants and using our roads and all these things that are great, but that are affecting our infrastructure. Yet here we are in a development that is a stone's throw from Flagler Beach and we're packing in more residents and we're taking away commercial. So I think this is moving in the opposite direction of where we need to be going in this city and in this county to provide for what our citizens need. That's green space, that's jobs, and we're just adding more residents. And I, I, I have to say, from the standpoint of, I know, one of my colleagues is running for county, one of them also may be wanting, running for county on the other end, this affects who you're running for. And I can't, I can't think, in my mind, I can't conceptualize how this is going to preserve the quality of life for not only the city, not only the city of Flagler Beach, but also the county. So I, I agree that this is a great project, but it's great as is. And I, again, I appreciate the applicant and city staff working together, but I really implore my colleagues, think about what we're doing. We continue to allow more and more residents to come in, we continue to go outside of our land development code to violate our own laws, which by the way, is not normal. It is our job to comply with our code. We have a code for a reason and we continue to ignore it. And I, I just, I need to know what the public benefit is. I need to know how we're preserving quality of life through this project. I don't see it, I don't agree with it and I won't vote for it. And I don't think a single resident sitting in this crowd or out there, we represent ninety-six thousand people in the city of Palm Coast, and they've all complained about what we continue to do and this is an example of why they keep complaining about it.
So just to help me, just to help me, okay. All right. So to help me understand, are you suggesting that this location is ideally suited for more commercial development?
I'm suggesting that this is supposed to...
Well, let's, let's, let's answer that question.
Yes, yes, this is...
You would put commercial development at the end of Colbert Lane, in that location on the intercoastal waterway?
Not even at the end, it's farther, it's farther up, it's not even at the end.
Almost at the end, yeah. I'm just, I'm trying to understand, I, I, I understand, I hear the philosophical part, but I, I can't imagine shoving commercial, commercial enterprises in a location that has no traffic count and has no business model that could possibly support a successful commercial enterprise.
Oh, the, the traffic count's coming there because we continue to...
It's not there now, Colbert Lane, I, I've lived there for a long time, it, it's not there now, so, you know, maybe it'll come later. But I'm just questioning this location because what you're doing is you're building rather expensive, high-end residential waterfront property, which certainly to some residents represents quality of life and maintains that corridor, which you have gated communities up and down the entire corridor. So I'm just questioning the concept of, of putting, burdening this area with commercial. That, that's my question.
You don't burden an area with commercial, you burden it with more cars and more residents. Bur, that, I'm sorry, Mayor, but I can't abide by that statement. You don't burden an area with commercial, that's what provides jobs, that is what's going to keep our, our young people from having to leave and being able to stay here and work. You, traffic counts are coming because we are, we are growing at such a fast pace. Colbert Lane right now is two lanes. I, I mean, and I understand that we are going to be working on infrastructure, but this, we had an MPD for a reason. When city planning initially did this, did they not understand that there would be growth and that we would have to look to the future and that, yes, the commercial would be needed eventually? So I, I, it doesn't, we didn't even have to reduce it by the full sixty thousand square feet, but for us to almost be doubling the amount of residents, I, I, is just unacceptable. So I asked during the last meeting, can we please do something about the amount of residents? That was not done.
Well, just so I'm clear, so the, the delta, the number of increased residents is how many?
It's, it went from like six hundred and sixty-three thousand to over...
No, 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 in this, in this development. This is what we're talking about.
Old development, it was six hundred and sixty-three, I think now it's one thousand eighty-five.
So we went up four hundred units?
Four hundred, yeah.
Okay. And the other objection I have to the statement is, yes, we do have a land development code, but that land development code was written with the foresight that it has within it the ability to adapt and to change for a vision for the future. It was not created and written, much like the Constitution of the United States, to be a static, non-living document that can never change. So in my view, since there is a mechanism within the LDC to make changes for the growth that maybe no one expected before, that that document is, contemplates this kind of, of, of growth in this area. I'm still stuck on the concept of, I, I guess I'd have to ask for an example, what kind of commercial would make sense there that would bring jobs for younger people? And then where would they live? I, 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 I'm not understanding it. Well, let me finish. And I agree conceptually that we desperately need the things you're talking about. I'm just questioning this particular location, which has, which is, I have to say, premium acreage within the city because it's waterfront, it's on Colbert Lane, which by the way, is never going to be a thoroughfare. It's a connector road which has no ons and offs. You can only enter it from one end and you can only get off of it from another end. That's all it's ever going to be. So I question very much that this will actually be a significant increase in traffic count other than you'll have more residents will use it and perhaps down the road, or down the road, the, the road will have to be widened at some point in the far distant future. But I'm just questioning, is this that place where we, we draw that line?
Well, Mayor, I, if, if this weren't the only time that we were doing this, I might not have an issue. But we, we literally just had this discussion about Belterra Estates, a discussion about Belterra Estates, which by the way, was fully commercial and we just turned it into almost full residential. That discussion was, well, there's not going to be the traffic count here and the lot across from it is also commercial, but it's not, it's commercial and multifamily residential. So it's okay because we can still have some possibly commercial over there. So my issue is that, and, and look at what we did with Harbor Side, and I objected to that as well because Harbor Side, we added residents, we took away commercial, at least here, we're guaranteeing a restaurant, where there we didn't. So, I mean, that's, you know, strides, but we keep doing and saying the same thing, yet we're all complaining about the, the messed up tax base. Ninety-two percent of our abhorrent come from residents and we're doing nothing to fix it, we're doing nothing to change it, we're exasperating it. And that's my issue. This, an MPD is supposed to be, the whole idea is quality of life to live, work, play. When we do these, you, you ask about the commercial that we would have here, that's it, that's it. It's daycares, doctor's offices, wine bars, you know, a gym, there's plenty. The point is to make this a walkable community so people don't have to leave.
So there's commercial space that's been available on Colbert Lane for the last fifteen years and there hasn't been a taker yet. So I'm just trying to understand which part of the city of Palm Coast will provide a successful business model because crying for commercial is fine, but if you build commercial space that is not going to be profitable and successful, what you're doing is you're going to blight the city with unsuccessful businesses. And I'm just questioning this location and maybe a couple of others as well. And you're right, we have marched forward on a couple of these specialized areas, but the reason that they're specialized is either because they're waterfront or because they're not, in my opinion, based on the experience that I have, well, well reserved for, for commercial type entities. And again, it's a difference of opinion and I understand that. So, and, and we each have our opinions, I get that.
Sure.
But I do, I do want everyone to understand that, I think everybody up here does agree that there does need to be more commercial, there does need to, but in the right place and it has to be successful. You can ill afford to put a commercial enterprise in a place, build it and have it fail. That we can't afford to do because that's bad for everybody.
Well, Mayor, respectfully, I think you blight an area by continuing to go outside of your code, continue to build when it's not compatible with the city, continue to take away quality of life by adding residents and not jobs, continue to not focus on infrastructure and just keep packing people in. And, and, and I understand the idea of having a business that might fail, but it is our job, that's why we now have economic development person, which we didn't have for years, so we have to give her some time to work. It is our job to provide the tools to the city to do what's right and I'm sorry, I don't think this is it.
And, and the only other qualifier I'd put in that, so we're approaching a median house price of close to four hundred thousand dollars, so we're certainly not going the wrong way in terms of the quality of life of the residential dwelling inventory in the area. So there seems to be no lack of demand considering that the median price continues to rise in the local area. Okay, so, you know, we have our points, but actually we have an agreement and we have a disagreement, both at the same time. And, and that's okay. Other comments?
Yeah, absolutely. This is not the type of area that Councilwoman Pontieri described, and also I don't appreciate the fact bringing a politicking into this. These are decisions that we're making impartial to, to anything else. That is a very strong accusation, I don't appreciate it, it's not very professional. And second, you don't live on Colbert Lane. Colbert Lane is not the place where you're going to have a target-sized commercial piece of property be developed. If you've driven Colbert Lane every single day like I have for the past, since two thousand and six, you will know that this is next to, honest to goodness, three-quarter million dollar homes in Palm Coast plantation, five hundred thousand dollar homes that are being built right next, next door in Marina Del Mar. This is not the same thing as a development that's going up in, off of Belterra, off Citation. I think it's not fair, but also just not representative of the actual situation that Colbert could actually sustain this type of commercial. There's been commercial available on one hundred and Colbert now pretty much forever and then further up, Colbert, which has not developed. So I fail to see, actually living in this, off of Colbert since two thousand and six, except for two years I've lived off of Colbert Lane, that commercial could be successful in, in the vicinity of these plantation developments and everything that I just don't think we're conveying the correct imagery of what Colbert Lane actually is. I mean, these homes, these are not, better or worse, these homes are not going to be filled by people with lower paying jobs. And if you have a two hundred boat stack house, I can tell you that someone who has an hourly wage is not probably going to keep their boat in a stack house. I'm, I'm very taken back at the misrepresentation of Colbert Lane and the, that this would be causing blight when all the homes that have been added on Colbert Lane have been higher and higher valued. So it's going the opposite direction and I just don't want to, to have this misrepresentation of what's been going on on Colbert Lane for someone who doesn't live there, hasn't lived there for the past twenty years.
Councilman, I live in the C-section. I actually use Colbert as a thoroughfare. So I do drive it, I do understand what you're saying. The, the issue is, we're, and, and I don't mean this to be disrespectful, but what you have just described is looking at things now. It's not looking to things in the future. The MPD is looking into the future, that's why we plan. So of course Colbert Lane isn't what it, it, it will be in the future. That's not why we have these. We have these because we are planning, this is part of city planning.
But it's also not what was predicted it to be twenty-five or thirty years ago.
Let's finish.
So I, I, I think that when we're looking at this, when we're looking, and, and we have to consider, this is not in a silo, this is in the entire city of how many residents we have continued to add and add and add and add. And this is just, this is just compiling on top of it. And I, I just need somebody to please explain to me why continuing to add residents and continuing to take away commercial specifically in a place where this is supposed to be a walkable community that you're not, you don't have to leave? How is this achieving that goal? And it's not a misrepresentation. That's exactly what this is supposed to be.
Do you think that there's going to be a Publix built there? Because there's a Publix around the corner that you would have to leave? I don't understand the, the concept that you wouldn't have to leave this community.
There's plenty of things that can be put into communities like this that make it, like I said, daycares, gyms, doctor's offices, things like that, that, where, where you have your own community, wine bars, you know?
Those type of things.
All kinds of, an ice cream place, what, I'm moving, I don't know, all kinds of things can be put in this community to make it exactly what it was advertised and intended to be. And, and I, I'm not going to continue to say the same thing, I understand your position, but what we are doing is taking away the original concept of this project so that, so that the developer can make more money and that is the bottom line.
Wouldn't the developer make more money if they could actually materialize it as a commercial entity, though?
If that were the case, then they wouldn't be doing that all over our city. They are, they are continuing to convert commercial because, because the, the allegation is that there's not a need for commercial. There's a need for residential, but there's not a need for commercial. So theoretically, could they maybe make the same money on commercial? Perhaps, but the argument has been, well, the residential will, will fill up quicker and the res, and the commercial will sit, so we want to turn and burn, which I get it, they're in, they're in the business for a reason, I don't fault them for that, but that's our job. It's our job to make sure we're looking out for quality of life over the applicant's bottom line and I don't feel we're doing that here.
Okay. All right, any additional comments by city council members?
We're, we're at a public comment, right?
Yes, correct.
So we're at the point where we can make a motion?
We are. Uh, well, let me just make sure, any other comments now? Yeah, so...
I'll make the motion to approve.
I would second that motion.
Okay, I just want to hold for a councilperson. So additional discussion, um...
You know, I, I wish I had a magic wand and I could wave it over anything we zone commercial and something magically would appear. But if no one is showing up and investing their money and risking their money, we, we can't force them, like we couldn't force someone to put a hotel in that other marina. It's not going to happen.
Well, I, and I appreciate, yeah, and I appreciate Councilwoman Pontieri's thought.
I appreciate the vision.
Well, the vision, so, and I'm not sure that, that, that we can actually look forward into the future. And I'm not sure, I mean, that's a discussion. The good news is that we do have the comp plan being opened up relatively soon. City manager, when are we starting that process? And I think that is just a wonderful opportunity to lock in more of these potential commercial, mixed-use, walkable sites that we're kind of talking about. And I think we could make a real effort at that.
City manager, before you respond, I apologize, what's the point in reopening the comp plan and putting these things in place if we're going to turn around five, ten years later and change it anyways? That's my issue. My issue is that we continue to do this. We say we're, we're engaging in opening up the comp plan. Mayor, please let me finish. We state that we're, we're reopening the comp plan and we're, we're planning in this manner, but then we turn around five, ten years later, we change it anyways.
So, I mean, do you, do you take exception to the founding fathers who wrote a constitution that was available for change by amendment as things progressed, as the country grew? I mean, I, I, in my mind, I can't imagine...
Elections matter, you're absolutely right.
I can't imagine a plan that you could lock in today that you are absolutely sure would be completely correct for the next generation, for the next five years and ten years. I just don't see that as a possibility.
I understand that, Mayor, and that's exactly why I just voted to convert, which I have been vehemently against. I just voted to convert the, the commercial acreage that we just talked about to residential. But that's because the applicant made a real effort to make it more compatible, they provided a, a public benefit, they, they retained commercial in the way that we asked. They, they, they did essentially what we said was going to be more compatible with the area. This is just too much. I said it before, the amount of residents that we're adding is just too much, they did nothing to address that issue. And so I think that's, that's the big issue. I get what you're saying and I'm, I'm amenable to change, otherwise I wouldn't have voted the way I did in the last project. This one I just can't.
Okay, understood.
One more follow-up question. The sixty thousand square feet of commercial space, what do you see as being a foreseeable amount of commercial space that would be developed there? So all the things that we spoke about, doctor's offices, nurseries, things like that, it's not going to fill up sixty thousand square feet. Do you actually foresee a situation where sixty thousand square feet of commercial on Colbert Lane, when one hundred has not been fully built up yet, would actually be fulfilled? And do you have a projection on potentially when that would happen? And we talk about the city as a whole, but this is a microcosm of that. This is, this is the decision that we're making at, at this level. So my question would be, what level, how much square footage of commercial space do you think would be necessary to ensure that in the future, which I believe you're taking the position that commercial is going to go up Colbert Lane, what square footage would you feel comfortable with making a prediction that could be potentially fulfilled? Otherwise, if, if you don't honestly believe that the commercial is ever going to be fulfilled up Colbert Lane, are you locking the decisions into never have anyone attempt to rezone anything on Colbert Lane? I mean, what do you feel comfortable with on Colbert Lane as far as this, this actual project square footage wise for commercial?
I, I, I've, I've said that I don't have an issue with eliminating commercial in a reasonable way that will not add such a heavy burden to the rest of our city and our neighboring city, in this case of Flagler Beach, who by the way, in at least the last five, six years has not gone outside their LDC, their LDRs in order to add residential. So we're creating a problem for them that they've fought pretty hard to fend off.
But they don't have any property.
But, but to answer your question directly, I don't know the answer to that question. What I can tell you is that adding four hundred units is a lot and it's going to create some problems for our residents that they already have been very vocal about not being happy. And I understand you don't like me quote-unquote politicking from the dais, that's not my goal. My goal is to simply point out that this is affecting not just us. This affects the county and it affects a neighboring city. So now our decisions don't just affect our city, they're affecting neighboring cities and I have an issue with that too, especially when we specifically have a commission to address this.
I mean, half of the developments are county on Colbert anyway, it's a county road.
Okay, all right, um...
I believe we have a motion on the table. I believe we have a second.
Yeah, there is, yeah, just give me a second here. And I do believe, and you'd stopped me before, and I accept that, that the comp plan would be that voice that you are projecting on the preservation of commercial areas to help to balance, especially the tax skew and the other pieces of the city that we need to balance in the future. So, once again, when does that actual process begin?
Yes, Mayor. So, on your future agenda, it's for October 10th. That's going to be a special workshop to kick it off.
Starting next month, and then we're in a two-year program. Okay, all right, very good. So, I do have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Yes, I seconded it.
There's been a second, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry. There was a second already, so I have a second. So, if there is no further discussion, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri?
No.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion passes four to one.
All right. We now move to Agenda Item H, which is ordinances of the first read. Counselor, if you would, read that in for me, please.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is an ordinance, the City Council's City of Palm Coast order to annex property to be included within the corporate area and city limits of the City of Palm Coast, providing for the annexation of approximately 62.11 acres of property described and exhibited to this ordinance and lying in the areas proximate to the existing city limits of the City of Palm Coast, Flagler County, Florida, providing annexation in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for annexation of real property and amendment of corporate city limits, providing for rights and privileges resulting from the annexation and the effect of the annexation upon land uses, providing for effect on ad valorem taxes, for effect on businesses and occupations, providing for severability conflicts, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of a voluntary annexation legislative action.
Thank you, Counselor. You have a presentation?
Yes, sir. Mr. Papa will have a brief presentation. This was heard at a meeting but tabled, and then, so this would be a first read, and the applicants here to answer any questions, and Jose has the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. My presentation will just basically be a review or regurgitation of the presentation you previously heard. So, again, this is a proposed, this is a voluntary annexation on behalf of GEO SAM. The background here is that we have a 62-plus-or-minus-acre parcel about 200 and 1/2 miles south of State Road 100 on the east side of Old Kings Road. It is currently vacant, other than for a portion of Steeplechase Trail, which runs through a portion of this property. So, what staff did here is with any voluntary annexation, we looked at the Florida statutes for its consistency with meeting the requirements for a voluntary annexation. One would be that is the property contiguous and reasonably compact, and the answer to that is that the subject area is contiguous on its northern property line to the City of Palm Coast municipal boundary, and the property is reasonably compact. Another criteria within Florida statutes is that the land shall not be annexed through voluntary annexation if such an annexation results in the creation of enclaves. The annexation of this property does not create an enclave. That is, a parcel or area does not become wholly enclosed within the boundaries of the City of Palm Coast. So, based on those criteria that are found within Florida statutes for voluntary annexation, staff finds that the petition from GEO SAM, Capital Florida U.S. LLC, to annex approximately 62-acre area meets the criteria within Florida statutes, Chapter 171.044 voluntary annexation, and the applicant's representative is available to answer any questions at this time.
All right. Let me start with city council. Questions on the request for annexation?
No, but disclosure of expedite communications because it's an ordinance?
Well, it's an executive action.
Okay, gotcha, because I'd responded to some emails about security.
There's nothing wrong with the disclosure.
No questions.
That was my question, too, Nick.
Yeah, because most of my-
Thank you, Bill.
Most of the questions that I received.
I have no questions.
Yeah.
Counselor, if you would, could you just very, very briefly, for the Publix edification, tell us what voluntary annexation is?
Well, the city limits of, or the limits of any local municipality change, and there's various methods for changing. And one of those is set forth, the process for that is set forth in the Florida statutes for voluntary annexation, and it creates some standards that must be met in order for a property to come into a local government, specifically a municipality. The record this evening and the staff presentation show that this particular property, through its application for until annexation, has met those standards in the Florida statutes. There are some effects and consequences of that voluntary annexation. Those are also provided for in the ordinance. Eventually, there's going to have to be a consideration of the zoning or rezoning of this property, as well as a changing of the municipal city limits, change in the ad valorem taxations, and other miscellaneous changes. But this is simply a process that is a Florida statutory process to allow a city to grow. And there's also a comparable process called contraction, but that is not what we're doing tonight. We're growing. We're not decreasing the size of the city limits.
Very good. So, if there are no specific questions from city council?
I have one as well, and it's just for clarification as well, because most of the emails that I'd received and I confirmed receipt of had to do with the future uses of this land and the projects that were, you know, potentially going to be here in the future and the way that would impact the current property owners. Bill, if you could, could you please just give us a top-down on what we're actually voting on today and whether or not we can take those types of things into consideration?
You're not doing that tonight.
Yeah.
It's a simple decision tonight, and that is, it's just, has this property owner, applicant, also known as an applicant, met the statutory requirements to be considered by this council to be part of the City of Palm Coast? Once that happens, if this passes upon second reading, at that point in time, if there is any efforts for development by this property owner within the City of Palm Coast, it'll have to comply with the Land Development Code of the City of Palm Coast and whatever development orders are required in order to comply and to obtain those development orders.
So, it would be your decision, our decision, to decide how they could proceed if we accept the annexation, as opposed to somebody else making that decision?
So, I understand there's a great amount of discretion that comes into this decision. I've also, I mean, I've met with the applicant. I've met with many of the residents about this, and it's my understanding, and I've spoken with the applicant at length, and I appreciate the time they've given me, they are willing to do certain things that the residents are concerned about, and it's my understanding, correct me, staff, if I'm wrong, and Mr. Eichmann, there is a mechanism for us to enter into somewhat of a, I don't want to call it a pre-annexation agreement, but some type of preliminary agreement where they have agreed to take certain steps when they go to develop this property, kind of in exchange for the annexation. I don't want to say exchange, but they've agreed to kind of protect a lot of the integrity of the development that's already there as we annex them in. One of those was a buffer between the new development and the existing development, some type of fence or barricade. The other was ensuring we keep some of the commercial space that's there right now. There was another of ensuring egress and ingress for the gated community out through that main road that's at the front. So, there were some things that the current residents in the gated community are concerned about that the applicant was willing to comply with, and so, whatever mechanism that we can put into place to preserve those, I'd like to discuss at this time.
So, does the applicant have a, can respond to that?
Michael Schmento for the applicant. Ms. Pontieri is correct. There were some, we're made aware of some issues that the residents wanted to be assured of, and that is providing for a fence or wall between the two subdivisions that are there, that we would ensure public access. I mean, that's a requirement, and there are easements in place. And there was also a request that we keep some of the commercial there. So, we do, we have a companion comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning application with you that'll come, hopefully, next month. And then, simultaneously, we have a conceptual master plan that shows that same thing. So, we're moving down that same path, and we are committed to abiding by those commitments to Ms. Pontieri and to the community. So, I don't know. That comes later, but yes, verbally, we will continue to commit to those agreements.
Thank you.
One of the vehicles or tools that could be used to accomplish what we were talking about is sometimes referred to as a voluntary commitment agreement, and that could come back as potentially as early as the second reading of this ordinance, but I want to make it very clear that this ordinance will not include those terms. It will not, it will not place as a condition for voluntary annexation. It'll be, it'll be a parallel path, but they won't, they won't intersect. You won't see this, as you have in the prior agenda items, you've seen language added to those ordinances and to those development agreements. That will not be in this voluntary annexation ordinance. It's just apples and oranges. But with this, and I want to emphasize, this voluntary agreement, it will be something that will then move forward, as Mr. Schmento has indicated, with the process for development orders after it becomes part of the City of Palm Coast.
Is the applicant willing to enter into a voluntary agreement that can move on this parallel path?
Yes, and whatever you all need to accommodate those limited conditions, next time we're in front of you, you will have the second reading of annexation. You'll have the first reading of the comprehensive plan.
I'm sorry. Wrong. I'm wrong. Oh, it's Planning Board. That's on the same day as second reading of this. I'm sorry.
So, scratch that. Yes, we'll agree. We'll put together an MOU, a letter, whatever we want to call it. We're fine with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My, everything that I had correspondence with was related to the security issues that everybody outlined.
All right. So, with that, I would open this item up, this agenda item, to the public. Are there any members of the public? Yes, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for your time and your opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is John Duncan. I own a property in the Polo Club West. It's located at 36 Steeplechase Trail, right adjacent to the property we're discussing tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the 34 residents and property owners in the Polo Club West and the Board of Directors in HOA. The Polo Club West is a very unique, upscale, private, gated, equestrian community, which was created in 2005. It is located immediately adjacent to the proposed annexation, where we share an easterly property line. The Polo Club West is comprised of 34 5-acre lots, numerous St. John's conservation areas, ponds, extensive natural vegetation, horse trails, and it borders the historic Bullo Creek. The minimum lot size is five acres. The minimum home size requirement is 2,500 square feet, with homes ranging as large as 6,000 square feet. As you can well imagine, we are very observant and engaged in any development that takes place in and around our area. I'm sure that you would be, too. We fully recognize, while we fully recognize and respect the rights of landowners to utilize their property in accordance with local planning and development and zoning laws, we also feel that an appropriate good neighbor, smart, fit philosophy should be exercised, particularly in this situation such as this, where you're being asked to join two vastly different land use developments. If approved, the Old Kings Village community will contain 205 houses in an extremely high-density configuration immediately outside the gates of our community. The 205 homes planned for Old Kings Village will generate 717 new residents and over 500 vehicles. It is completely natural that people will want to explore into our private community. Even in the current undeveloped state, we're faced with situations, people pulling up to our gate, bypassing our gate with ATVs and mopeds and bicycles, loitering in the private woods, and fishing in the private homeowners' ponds. The safety of strangers attempting to pet or feed the horses is also of great concern. With unfettered access to our lands, this will quickly get out of hand. If approved and in recognition of these concerns, we respectfully request and deem it should be appropriate to incorporate some privacy initiatives into the plan. We feel that a privacy wall should be constructed along the northern and easterly border with added decorative plannings cohesive with the current natural environment. There is also a questionable landlocked lot labeled Estate 34 in the northeast corner that needs to be defined and included inside that wall. We ask that the current existing right-of-way, which connects Old Kings Highway and our gate, be defined in perpetuity, as well as our decorative monument sign. This right-of-way currently exists in the county-approved PUD. Sound buffering and light pollution should also be taken into consideration, and we ask that the existing allowable and prohibited use of the commercial property remain in place. In conclusion, while attempting to respect each other's rights, we also feel these are simple, common asks for the proper joining of two very dissimilar use communities. Thank you.
I appreciate your comment, and I appreciate your approach. Without understanding all the details, which we'll get to in a minute, the request seems certainly at a high level reasonable, and I appreciate your willingness to collaborate and work with the community, albeit we have a county and a city on each side of this, so it is unique that way. So, thank you very much for the comments.
Thank you.
Questions from city council members?
I have no questions.
I have no further questions, Mayor.
I have no questions.
I can't resist. I am very much a horse lover, so I definitely appreciate at least some part of the community. I think I may be the only one in our fair city. You folks, I guess, have more horses than we have, but anyway, I certainly do understand that. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue at this time? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Cara Dixon, and I'm here on behalf of my husband and myself. We're currently building a house in Polo Club West at 43 Steeplechase, and I'm actually, I wanted to read a letter from one of our neighbors. They can't be here tonight, and they actually live right next to the property that will be built, pretty much butt up against the new community when it moves forward. But this is Bonnie Spillers, and she's, her address is 40 Secretariat Lane. And she writes, "Hi, my name is Bonnie Spillers. My husband Jason and I are passing this letter on to some of our neighbors to read at the city meeting tonight due to not being able to attend. We would like to, we would like for them to read it and speak on our behalf tonight. My family and I live in Polo Club West at 40 Secretariat Lane. We are the last 5-acre lot at the end of the cul-de-sac. We wanted to reach out about our concerns on the controversial project up front on Old Kings Road, mainly about the 1-acre lot adjacent to our property and the access altogether to our community. We love living in Polo Club West and feel very secure there. We bought in the gated community for safety and security, among other numerous reasons. My husband travels extensively for work, and we have two young children with special needs. Our son is 13, and our daughter is 12. Both of our children have bilateral cochlear implants and are deaf. We decided to build in Polo Club West because it is a gated neighborhood with plenty of privacy, nice homes, great neighbors, and is secure. These new development proposals have us quite worried about some of the things we are hearing about, the new plans. Our main concerns regarding the development, it opens up a lot, up the lot's rights across the street from our home, where people can just walk about, walk out their backyard into our neighborhood. Also, the 1-acre lot beside us is included in their new development. This lot is connected to our yard, and whatever is done with it will directly impact our life. This could give any outsiders access to our gated community and especially property adjacent to ours. We are not comfortable with that at all. All of this takes away from any security we have and defeats the purpose of being in a gated neighborhood. In an effort to protect ourselves, we reached out and tried to purchase the 1-acre lot next to us from them. They told us that they haven't promised to someone else for some sort of trade for consulting services and could not sell it. This is horrifying. We hope that if the development moves forward, that some type of barrier or wall is put around any non-Polo Club West property to keep it separate from our gated community. For my family's sake and my peace of mind, I prefer no non-residents of Polo Club West have any access to any part of our community that doesn't come through the front gate. We are reasonable people and understand that development is reality and a necessary part of our community growth. We love our neighborhood." Almost done. "And want to keep it safe, secure, and beautiful. We ask that the council please consider what is reasonable and help us find some basic compromise that works for everyone. We love it here. We do not want to move. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate your service to Palm Coast and Flagler Beach. Bonnie and Jason Spillers."
Thank you for relaying the comment. Are there, okay. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Council. Mayor Bob Addick. I own a property in Polo Club West. And just to put a pin kind of in that last email, but she's concerned, outside the development, it's kind of shown the eastern property line. There's a 1-acre piece that the previous owner is trying to hold on to, and access is shown on the PUD plan. It's going through Polo Club, so in case that wasn't clear there, and so, the property owner wants it. But I wanted to thank Mr. Schmento for working with us before the annexation and trying to be a good neighbor. We have seen three sales in the last five- We have seen three sales in the last five months in Polo Club. Granted, there's only 34 lots in that subdivision, but those sales were $330,000, $410,000, and $600,000. So, those are vacant lot homes, not no homes, vacant lot sales. And we talk about protecting property values and everything, and that's really what we're trying to do here today. There's been some significant investments in that community. Undoubtedly, those investments are going to be good for our adjoining property owner when he goes to sell his lots. You know, you do a quarter-mile radius and half a million dollars is the vacant lot land, so just up here to say that we probably know annexation will be happening, you know? Development's going to happen on Old Kings Road. City of Palm Coast is going to be in control of a lot of that as you go north from our subdivision to 100. We hope you guys consider the street as it is now. A lot of really nice communities. Larger lots are there. The cheapest lot you can buy on Old Kings right now is $180,000 in Fairchild Oaks, so we don't need to cram a lot of houses on Old Kings if it happens, you know? Those are the choices that you all will be faced with, but we feel there's a lot of money to be made by developers if they provide bigger lots, nicer subdivisions, and we hope that that's kind of the vision of Palm Coast, too. That's going to be our corridor coming from the south into the city, so I hope you guys respect it and protect it, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other speakers? Any other speakers want to talk on this issue?
Sally Arnoff, and I live in Sugar Mill Plantation. I was here when this request came up the first time, excuse me, and there was much discussion about why the developer wanted to be annexed, and the answer was not satisfactory to you all, and I respected that, and you did not want to get into a situation where the developer was not happy with what the county was doing, and they thought they would have a better working relationship with you as Palm Coast. And Mr. Mayor, you had requested staff to go to the county and to find out what the situation was, and then to decide whether or not you wanted to voluntarily accept the developer into Palm Coast with what they want to do with the property and what the issues were with the county. And I just wanted to know, has that been resolved, and did you get your answers?
So, I mean, I'll, the best way I can answer that is that staff has worked very closely as the residents have spoken about talking to the applicant's council as well, and yes, my understanding is that they are working together to find the best solution that will solve the issues at hand, so that would be my best answer to you. I'm not a part of staff, and through the charter, I am not involved in detail, but yes, yes.
And my second issue had to do with the land development code, and I have built my reputation on following the rule. And if, and I raise my kids the same way, if you don't like where the rule is or where the line is drawn, change it, but until that time, follow it, and that eliminates chaos. So, when you were talking about making exceptions to the land development code, that concerns me now that you're going to be annexing property that is right almost next to myself.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Are there any other residents that would like to speak to this issue at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment out, and does city council have any additional questions for the applicant at this time?
The only thing that I wanted to know is, and I've questioned this before, is that one-acre lot, I don't know if it's, because I've heard conflicting stories about whether or not that one-acre lot, which I believe, because I've been there physically, I think it's at the end of the cul-de-sac, if that's correct. So, is that part of this annexation? I believe it is. So, I don't know if the intent, and if the applicant can answer this, if the intent is to put homes there, if whatever fence or buffer you all have agreed to put up is going to block that as well, it's going to just kind of circle around that cul-de-sac, is there an intent in place for that one-acre lot right now?
Certainly, I can answer that question. It is a, I think it's larger than one acre, actually, but it's a residential lot. It's not intended to be part of any other type of development. It was always intended to be a residential lot that's consistent with the adjacent lots or lot that is being built upon that was talked about earlier. It is part of our annexation.
So, then presumably the buffer would also block that from Polo Club West?
We'll have to evaluate that, given the fact that we'll go back and look at what this privacy wall looks like and evaluate that, so we'll have more information for you next time.
Okay, because I'm not sure of the point. If we're going to build a buffer and then stop it where that one-acre lot is, I mean, that essentially eliminates the point, so I just want to make sure that that's not, we're not leaving that out of the discussion.
Good, yes, ma'am.
Hold on a second. So, sorry. Mr. Tyner, I'm going to depend on you, Mr. Papa, to continue this discussion with the applicant, to get as far down the road on their requests and the collaborative attitude that they have shown to make this work for everybody. So, can I count on that, you know, that direction from you, or do you need more specific direction from me?
No, I think we got really good direction from council. We'll go back and work with them.
Okay, all right. All right, any other discussion?
My only comment is I'd like to thank everyone for their comments, and I'd also like to add that I don't think that your request is unreasonable, and I am hoping that the developer will consider making sure that this wall is installed. Thank you.
I would concur, and I'm encouraged by the dialogue that occurred here and then also the back and forth with the community, and I obviously have intersected with some of you guys, and just thank you for the nice correspondence.
Yeah, and staff, you guys have, you've done a good job. This is a unique situation, and I appreciate your extra attention to keep everybody on board with that, so I appreciate that. With that, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
A motion for the vice mayor to accept the voluntary annexation. Is there a second?
Seconded.
And from Councilwoman Hyder, any further discussion? So, let's, we'll call it.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder? Councilmember Clufus?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
We now move to section number H, which will be ordinances of the first read. Am I on the right place?
Resolutions.
Wow, way down there. So, we now move to item number 11, which should be resolutions. If you would read that in for me, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving an interlocal agreement between Flagler County and the City of Palm Coast for utility infrastructure improvements, authorizing city manager designated to execute the agreement, providing perceivability conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
All right, hold just for a second till we clear the room. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, residents. Steve Flanagan, your utility director here tonight. I would like to share with you an update on some of our current city-county joint projects, and then present to you a new city-county project for your consideration. So, this slide speaks to the previously approved city-county projects which utilize County American Rescue Plan Act funding. The county identified two capital improvement projects to enhance the minimum level of service to areas on the beachside. On March 11th, 2021, Public Law Number 117-2, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, was signed into law to combat, excuse me, COVID-19, including the public... Sorry. Including the public rescue. Flagler County is a recipient of funds under the CLFRF. That stands for the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. These funds may be used to make improvements to water and sewer infrastructure. The county identified two utility capital improvement projects on the Barrier Island. These two projects had major benefits to the community, one of which is environmental reduction of nitrogen and phosphorus to the waterways. It reduces untreated wastewater overflows on the Barrier Island, increases the capability of the city's wastewater force main backbone system on A1A, and expands the economic development possibilities for the business community in the area. The next three slides show a rough growth of the nutrient loading from the year 2000 to 2011, and then ultimately 2021. These wastewater central system improvements will allow future reduction of the septic tank drain field impacts to the local waterway systems in the area. This slide is from year 2000. This next slide is year 2011, and then ultimately you see year 2021 and the impacts. As you can see, this graphic depicts the increased loading due to building growth in the area that utilizes septic tanks and drain fields for disposal of wastewater. Update: Extension of city wastewater line to Hammock Community Center and Malacampa and Bing's Landing Parks. So, this project limits is from basically A1A and Jungle Hut Road up to the intersection of A1A and Malacampa Road, down Malacampa Road all the way to the Hammock Community Center and the county park. This extension will provide access to wastewater for many properties between Jungle Hut Road and Malacampa Road. The project is now at 90% design plans. Permitting is fully underway, and project bidding should be starting in the next 30 to 60 days. This map depicts basically the location I described. The green line towards the bottom of the map is A1A, and then the red line is the connection point for the project along A1A up to Malacampa, down Malacampa, to the community center, the Flagler County Community Center, and the county park. So, the next slide here talks about the proposed project for today. Extension of the city wastewater line from the current approved project limits to Marineland. The project entails the extension of a sewer force main to be owned and operated by the city northward along State Road A1A from a connection point at Malacampa Road. The sewer force main extension would then continue northward along A1A to Marineland. This extension will also provide access to future central wastewater system improvements for many other properties adjacent to State Road A1A. Flagler County will fund this capital project through an $8 million federal grant. The City of Palm Coast will manage the planning, design, engineering, permitting, and construction of the project. The parties will adhere to all requirements of the federal grant funds. Should bidding cost of construction be higher than the approved funding set forth in the agreement, the parties may amend the agreement prior to award of the construction contract of the project. Here you see a map of basically the connection point at A1A, the red line at the bottom of the map here is connecting at A1A and Jungle Hut, which is the terminus of the prior approved county-city project, extending, if funds will allow, all the way to the southerly limits of Marineland town. Staff recommends council approval of the interlocal agreement with Flagler County for wastewater extension improvements on the Barrier Island. I would like to also share with you, it has been a pleasure working with the county on this project and the prior projects, and it's my pleasure to say that Mr. Jorge Salinas is in here with us today from Flagler County. He is the chief of staff for Flagler County, and it really has been my pleasure to work with him in the county administrative service.
I appreciate that. So, Jorge, in the spirit of collaboration and also with all due respect to Councilwoman Pontieri, this project, I really believe, has economic development written all over it for the long-term future, and it's actually outside of the City of Palm Coast. Not that, obviously, we'll all benefit, so, I mean, the regionality of the concept, Councilwoman, is good, but, I mean, there's no doubt that that's what this does. This opens up that entire stretch for a lot of different possibilities that would develop the economy in the foreseeable future. I'm going to put you on the spot, Jorge. I'm assuming you agree with that.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jorge Salinas, Flagler County. The main intent is to remove, in the future, remove septics and move them to sewer, but you're correct, this would open up the possibility for commercial to be able to develop along A1A. Some of these commercial properties have limitations in terms of space because they have to put a septic tank, and that would reduce the amount of parking space that they have, so this would open up and allow us, allow them to be able to expand and provide more commercial as well. But the main intent is to remove the septics, move septics to sewer.
And that's obviously in line with the governor's initiative to, you know, rid ourselves of these, you know, of this type of wastewater treatment over time, obviously, right?
Yeah, they, one of the things I've stated in a previous presentation, Mayor, is, you know, you hear of these algae blooms in South Florida, and the last thing we would want to have here, and nitrogen and phosphorus is a wonderful thing. You go down to Lowe's and Home Depot, and you pick it up and put it in your lawn, on your lawn, makes everything green, but unfortunately, too much of it is a terrible thing, and we need to keep it out of the waterways as much as we possibly can so that we protect our environment. I do agree with you as well, though. There are people beating our doors down that we can't get these force mains installed fast enough, especially for the business community, the restaurants and such there as Jorge spoke of. You know, it's either parking lot or septic drain field, and septic drain field unfortunately wins out, so you can only park so many people there, and you can only have so many seats in your restaurant there.
Thank you, all right. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I just wanted to also comment that there was a slight correction I want to make on the grant. It's actually a legislative appropriation that's going to be managed through a DEP grant, but it was through last year's legislative appropriation that that funding came to us, and I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you for allowing and supporting your staff to work with us on this project. It's been, like Mr. Flanagan said, a pleasure working with your staff on this project and many other projects. I just want to make sure that you are aware of that.
Thank you. Questions from city council at this time?
I have none.
I just have two small, first of all, thank you for the interlocal work and collegiality. I appreciate it, and I am looking forward to this project. I think it's great. It's great for the area. We need it. My question is regarding specifically the agreement. Under section three, it says that after a certain period of Under Section 3, it says that after a certain period of time, the city will be 50% responsible for certain changes, maintenance, things of that nature. If the property doesn't belong to us, it belongs to the county, why are we taking on 50% of those costs in the future?
Okay, without reading that right off, Councilperson Pontieri, I believe that language is language we utilized when we put infrastructure within county road right-of-way. Because in the past, we have had problems, you might say, with having water or wastewater infrastructure in place. And then a stormwater or road project would require some of our water or wastewater infrastructure to be removed or replaced at cost to us. So we worked with the county on a joint agreement as to if we put in facilities like this, that over a period of time, if they have to be relocated due to a county stormwater or road project, for example, that the county would reimburse a certain percentage. As the years go on, that percentage would get lesser and lesser until ultimately, the city is responsible for any relocation costs for water or sewer, which is what we're responsible for in any area within the city of Palm Coast. But outside the city of Palm Coast, we don't have all that control of the road right-of-way and how the design would be implemented. So it was just one of those protections that we worked together on so that nobody would be impacted too greatly.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And even though the county's funding this project, the infrastructure belongs to the city of Palm Coast.
Well, and I understand that, and I can appreciate that. But if the county requires some type of relocation, if something catastrophic happens, I get that it's our infrastructure, but, and I don't mean this in a rude way, but it's because you need it. So I still take pause with us providing 50% of the cost of something on property that doesn't belong to us. I mean, we get a tangential benefit, you know, residual benefit, I understand that. But 50% is a lot, and those projects, as we know, we've seen them come from Carl and Mr. Carmelo, they're expensive. And our taxpayers are paying for it with no real direct benefit to them. So I guess I just, and I did see it in the other agreement, I saw it in the other agreement, Councilman Kluftis. And I take issue with that one, too. Why are, conceptually, what benefit are we receiving by paying 50% of these costs in the future?
Keep in mind, Councilperson Pontieri, that on roadway projects, for example, within the city of Palm Coast, so Old Kings Road gets widened, Belt Air gets widened, any of those city road rights-of-way, there's a cost to relocate the water and sewer there that we are bearing as a city and as the utility. So it's no different from being in the county area, county road right-of-way to the city. There's a cost to relocate utilities, whether it's stormwater, water, sewer lines, whatever it is. In this case, because the city does not have control of the right-of-way, we tried to make a reasonable agreement with the county so that neither the county or the city would be negatively impacted any more than necessary, you might say. It's gonna, it happens whenever you have a roadway project, there are costs for relocation.
Sure. Sorry, maybe I'm just not understanding. But the county pays for its own relocation on county roads. The city pays for its own relocation on city roads. Even though we're providing that infrastructure because they need it, why are we still paying for a necessary move if the county needs it on their roads?
Well, the state law also requires us to move our facilities. I will also compare for you, Councilperson Pontieri, that most of this project is actually within State Road right-of-way.
Okay.
So it wouldn't even apply to that portion of the project. Really, the only portion of the project that, off the top of my head, this would apply to is Malacampera Road.
And that's, that is where I'm kind of, yes, I get that.
That was actually in the previous agreement. So this part of the language, I don't really think it applies to the project being discussed today because the entire extension is within A1A, which is State Road right-of-way.
Sure, but for Malacampera, it's applicable.
It would, yes, ma'am.
And, okay, that helps. I appreciate that very much. And sorry, I'm just inquisitive because I don't understand that specific dynamic in the agreement.
No, appreciate that. I want you to understand.
And I believe that Mr. Flanagan is correct that all utilities, like if we have a project and we need to relocate, all utilities are responsible to relocate and accommodate for the projects that we're trying to move forward. So I think it's the responsibility of the utility. But in this case, we did come to an agreement that it made sense to probably split it in half and then kind of gradually move it out.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
I would just add that that was almost a monumental-type movement when that happened, when we came to the 50-50 agreement. That was very big steps forward for the city because it could have been a very contentious situation. It almost makes us both have skin in the game. And it makes us coordinate with our planning so that we don't have to continue moving these type of, you know, instances all over around. I thank you both gentlemen for working so collaboratively, and I'm looking forward to this. I think that all of these septic systems are basically time bombs or landmines inside of the ground, you know, with these nitrogen deposits that potentially can cause blooms and things like that. I think this is a very great thing for not only Palm Coast but Flagler County. And also, these agreements help keep the integrity of our utility at the highest level when we are sure of how we're going to move forward in the future. It helps not only us, but our neighbors, which I am very much aware of for posterity, Ms. Pontieri. It helps us all move forward in unison. So I thank you guys, and I look forward to this type of project. Thank you.
With that, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment. Anybody want to make a comment on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve the resolution as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Pontieri has seconded. Is there any further discussion? Then I'll go ahead and, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number 12. Counselor, if you would read that.
Thank you, Counsel.
Vice Mayor, Council, this is a resolution of City Council, the city of Palm Coast, with approving an engineering consulting consultant contract with Wright Pierce Incorporated for the water treatment facility 1 sustainability study. Authorizing the city manager or designate to execute said contract, providing for severability conflicts for implementing actions and providing effective date.
Good evening, Council. Alex Blake, utility engineer.
Peter Russell, utility deputy director.
So we have three utility-related presentations coming up. The first of which is this water treatment facility number 1 sustainability study. This presentation is for award of an engineering consultant contract for approximately 520K. And we'll go into the water plant, an overview, kind of of some major components. You can see in the annotation here, we got a 1 million gallon ground storage tank, sodium hypochloride chemical feed station, high-service pump station, filter building, clear wells, 2.5 million gallon ground storage tank, washwater recovery basins, the sludge lagoon, the sludge drying bed, and clarifier reaction basins. So that's just a quick overview of the water plant. This is, by the way, located off of Palm Coast Parkway, near the library. Probably most of you know where that is. And I'm gonna let Pete kind of go into some of the data as leading up to why we need to do this study. So you want to?
Sure, yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. One of the main reasons for this project is water treatment plant number 1 is a pretty old plant. It's actually 46 years old. And we just want to know, we want to hire a multi-discipline engineering firm that can look at the structural, the electrical, the mechanical components of the plant and kind of tell us, advise us, how long can we run and operate this plant safely? And can we do it in 10 years? Can we do it in 15, or 20, 25 years, whatever the case may be? Should we build a new plant instead of keeping this plant running? So these are the things that we're looking at here with this project. This slide right here shows, we do this once a year. We project how much production, water production, that all three plants combined will produce or can produce. And this was pretty accurate. 2022 was very close. I believe it was 8.4. 2023, so far this year, calendar year, is an 8.8. So it's just slightly under the medium-high projection. This is the actual, the actual from 2010, how much water we produce. Again, it's combined for all three plants. And if you can go back one slide, Alex, as you can see, projected out to 2025 to 2026, we're looking at some pretty high numbers. So we really want to take care of our business here and keep that plant, plant number 1, running. And if you go on to the next two slides, this right here, this slide shows each plant divided. As you can notice, the water treatment plant 1 annual average daily flow has kind of dropped off since 2016, and plant 2 has picked up a little bit. So again, this project is looking at a lot of different components and trying to get that plant to continue to operate for us. So just a quick overview. The water treatment plant number 1 is a chemical precipitation plant, lime softening, facility permitted to produce 6 million gallons per day. The water plant 1 has been in continuous operation for over 50 years. The actual building, the plant now, has been in operation for 46 years, but the 50 years, meaning that there was a plant there prior to 1977 when we built this plant. So really, the site is over 50 years old. The last expansion upgrade occurred in 1982. Went from a 2 million gallon per day plant to a 6 million gallon per day plant. The plant collects its raw water from 31 shallow-packed gravel-packed wells located mostly north of Palm Coast Parkway and west of US 1. New wells are being explored with the prospect of three new wells projected to be constructed, developed, and put online hopefully in 2024, next year. Sauce water from the raw water production wells, typically, the lifespan of a gravel-packed wells is usually about 20 years. We've got many wells serving plant 1 that were constructed and developed and put online in the 1970s. Reason being is we do a lot of different types of monthly samples. We view required specific capacity. We see any, if we see any changes or decreases, we will rehabilitate the well. So that's one of our common practices. One of the things we look at is the degradation of the old wells. We constantly take in statics, drawdowns, and pumping levels on a monthly basis. And another thing that we're concerned with is our outdated sludge processing technology. We have a lagoon where we put our sludge into. We also have a drying bed. And to put it plainly, that that system is, again, it's a little bit outdated. It was gritted in the 1980s and the 1990s, but we struggle with dealing with that sludge that we produce. We found another way to dispose of it, in-house. Well, not really in-house, but it was an in-house idea that we came up with. And that is, we hired a company to come every day to pump the liquid sludge out of the sludge thickener and to take it away and haul it off. Okay, just a point of, just a fact here, aging assets. The average treatment plant life expectancy is typically 40 to 50 years. And treatment equipment typically lasts 15 to 20 years, like the mechanical rotating equipment. As a result, a majority of the publicly-owned treatment works established in the 70s require improvement, repair, or replacement to extend their lifetime. These are just some visual shots of the plant, plant 1. One thing I'll point out, this slide all the way to the right is a pipe gallery. And I know you can't see it, but behind that is the filters. We have six filters that have a rated capacity of 1 million gallons per day. Filter number 6, the last one, currently is experiencing a little bit of what we feel is a leak. We have lime extracting out of the concrete, and we have drips coming down. And this is, this holds the water, the filters. And every time we clean it, okay, in a couple of weeks, it comes back again. Which is the construction, the structural part of this project is, for them, our engineers, it's a multi-discipline engineering firm, to look at all of these things, including this. This could be major. So the rest of the pictures are just some shots of the plant. And we have plans on, hopefully, looking at everything. Not only the plant, but also some of the other components that are, that we will look at, like the system infrastructure as a whole. How this connects with the water mains, the raw water mains, how it connects with the other plants as well. But it's mostly going to be focused on this old plant here. Just a couple of things I'd like to point out is the importance of a water supply providing a safe, reliable, and adequate supply of drinking water. Meeting the community's utility service needs. Hospitals, businesses, industry rely on consistent, safe water supply to provide their services. And I know you know that we have a new hospital that's directly, almost directly across the street. And it's almost really now one of our first customers. Another important fact I'd like to point out is having inadequate water supply with high-pressure pumping to supply fire hydrants for fire suppression is vital to the community's safety and the protection of buildings. The modernization and future capacity upgrades of our water system is important in providing today's needs and tomorrow's demands. There's a lot of new technology out there. There's a lot of things that potentially we can do to make that plant run a lot better and last a little bit longer.
All right, so I'm gonna touch on, thanks Pete, by the way, covering the generalities of the plant and its needs. The study and the purpose, or the study purpose and goals that we're presenting, which would be in the contract, just kind of an overview of that. As Peter mentioned, it's, we're gonna have them evaluate the structural, mechanical, and electrical condition of the buildings, the tanks, basins, major equipment and control systems, estimate the asset value of the equipment, develop a 20-year capital forecast plan which identifies annual improvement needs for the plant 1, investigate options for modifying and improving water treatment processes which would be needed for water treatment facility 1 to successfully treat and distribute 6 million gallons a day or greater, and provide site plan concept renderings. And then recommend improvements for system automation and cybersecurity. So that's also obviously a big thing, as we go to more automation, we're gonna need more cybersecurity. Evaluate the lime sludge handling and dewatering options. Provide subsurface exploration and testing of the piping integrity. So what Pete alluded to in the pipe galley there, the wall is one thing, but the potential of pipe failure is another. So they actually have equipment, the non-invasive equipment, that can test the wall. the wall thickness and integrity of those pipes, which is very important. Develop cost analysis of maintaining and modifying Plant One, including operation costs for a term of twenty years into the future. Evaluate costs and benefit of compared options in time of implementation considerations to forecasted water demands. Provide report with conclusions and recommendations for the sustainability of Water Treatment Facility One. Any questions?
So you're talking specifically or only about Treatment Plant One?
That's correct, yes.
And the reason for that is because the others are not as old?
Oh, that's correct, yeah. Water Plant Number Two was built in nineteen-ninety-two, put online in ninety-two, and Water Plant Number Three was put online in two thousand and eight, and again, this was nineteen-seventy-seven.
My understanding that all three plants operate with three different systems?
Well, they're all manifold together. They're all manifold together. In other words, they produce water, treat water, and put in one piping system.
I, I think the mayor's asking processes, they are three different.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, correct, yes.
So I, I just, the engineer in me wants to ask why we wouldn't want to align the processes so that we're using one process for the future? It's gotta be more expensive to be operating, managing, buying the resources for three different processes, I would think.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that is a possibility, and that's what this study is gonna be about, is to help us make that determination.
The study look at that kind of?
Right, it's also gonna look at the waste.
How long will the study take to do?
I can estimate, what, two years, maybe?
Well, we, we, we think we're gonna get significant amount of information and conclusions in within twelve months.
Okay, and ultimately, this study gets, boils down to what it's gonna cost our residents in terms of the utility fees?
Yes, it, it will, it will help prepare an outlook for twenty years and what that capital outlay will be for sustaining the plant.
That's a significant component of the study, I would guess. It's not that you all decide how much utility fees are gonna be. They are estimated, forecasted through the use of these studies, I would think, right? How much it's gonna cost to maintain or build these facilities out for the future, which eventually will translate into what we all have to pay to enjoy these services, right?
Correct.
Right, that's correct. Yep.
Kinda put the connect?
And again, just kinda going back to your question, Mayor, is, well, you're talking about kind of a, a uniformity of treatment and so forth. Well, as each plant, as you start with the oldest technology, the oldest plant, and you move forward, and we went to from a lime softening to a membrane plant to an RO, you know, a low-pressure RO, those have also come about, not just based on technology evolutions, but also the water quality from the wells that are serving it. Because the wells down on the south end of town, which feed Water Treatment Plant Two, those are upper floor dan aquifer wells, so those are actually lime wells. So they're like two-hundred-and-fifty feet deep, say, on average, whereas most of the wells feeding, if not all the wells feeding Water Plant One, are surfisal aquifer. So they might average around like seventy feet or so. So the, the other aspect of it, too, is that the concentrate that comes off from Water Treatment Plant Three actually goes over to Water Treatment Plant One for processing. So you've got a source water there at approximately three-quarter MGD. This is, this is kinda similar to Water Treatment Plant Two in the sense that the city basically undertook a, a new revolutionary thing, if you will, in the water treatment process with a zero liquid discharge, okay? So that, that was done, what, completed four, four? Okay, a few years ago. And so effectively, what, what you have now is you have a lime softening system at Water Treatment Plant Two that has both technologies. So you kinda need the old technology, to some extent, to buffer the new technology. All right, so that, just, but we're gonna research, we're gonna have them research all these different options to try to optimize. Well, I think that's the key word, optimization, best, best use of money.
So I prefer that than, because the thought that you're helping to dispel in my mind that we have, so we, we've evolved over time, but we have a bit of a Rube Goldberg approach. But we've, you've explained, because of the, the source of the water, we've had to be different depending on where it was. So, okay, questions?
Thank you, gentlemen, I have no questions.
My only question is, excuse me, how long are we projecting this study and the findings are going to be good for as far as when we'll have to do this type of study in the future? Because both this one and the next one are pretty hefty money-wise, so just looking at what you foresee is kind of, you know, again, having to address this later on?
Well, this hasn't been done before, for, for these plants, so because, I mean, Palm Coast is a city, it's still, yeah, I mean, I know the utility's older than the city, but it's still fairly young compared to some other, you know, communities. So we, we don't really have an answer to that until we kinda do the first one. I would suspect that you're, you're pretty solid for about ten years.
And this is in the five-year CIP, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much, I appreciate it. My questions revolve around the invasiveness of this process at Waste Water Treatment Plant Number One and what you perceive to be the estimated risk for something catastrophic to happen. So I've been part of situations before where these type, type of testing scenarios have actually ended up in, in a failure-type situation because it was exacerbated by said testing. Are you, are you, gentlemen, confident that not only who we choose to do this is capable of doing it, but that the condition hasn't gone beyond a state that is actually safe to be able to do this type of stuff? Because I'm, I'm just asking very difficult questions, and I completely understand all of our positions here, but when I hear things like potential leaks and things like that, those are the type of things that can go from bad to really, really not great with relatively small amounts of time. Is that something you, gentlemen, are worried about or have in the purview, or that, that we are going to be addressed with this consultant?
Well, it absolutely will be, that, that is a primary focus, I mean, to evaluate structural integrity, you know, not, not just in reinforced concrete walls, but, you know, also piping. The, the mechanisms that they have to do this are not, not an invasive thing. So you're not cutting out like a chunk of pipe just to see, hey, how's, how, how the wall, yeah, so they have a technology, I believe it's an ultrasound-based type thing to do that.
Cool, gotcha, not pressurization.
So, and, and then, as far as the leaks go, you know, on the wall, some of the techniques that have been used in the past are, are like an epoxy injection, that type of thing. So there, we have, we have mechanisms, not, not like the staff has it on hand, but there are plenty of contractors that can come in and do those kind of, you know, point repairs. But we're, what we're really looking at is, what is the overall long-term effect? Is this gonna be continually degrading? Are, are we gonna get another crack when you seal this one on? Is that, is there something going on with this concrete? Sometimes what'll happen is you'll get a little, like a, a hairline crack in concrete. Well, for concrete itself, that's not a big issue, but the reinforcement inside that concrete, once you start wicking water in there, it, it just starts expanding, you know, corroding that, that, that rebar, and it wants to split that concrete more. So, you know, those are the kinds of things, and, yeah, that's gonna be a, a highly, you know, looked at, highly important task.
Gotcha, okay, understood. I just, I speak from experience, I was involved in something that involved fuel tanks up in New York and reverse pressurization, all sorts of stuff that didn't go correctly. I just wanna make sure that we have a resiliency plan and because of the type of testing we're doing, just in my past experience, I appreciate your input.
And just one more question before I throw out to the public. You mentioned that this study is going to cover your, your construction, your electrical, your plant, your, your infrastructure, all those things. Is there a component of the study which forecasts, not the availability of, of staff to operate these plants, but considers making the plants more, I don't wanna, wanna say employee-friendly? In other words?
Skated friendly?
We're gonna need folks to run these places in the future, and it's my understanding that you're struggling now just to attract workers to into this field. So that's gotta be an awfully important component, but I don't know if the study addresses that.
Probably not, I don't think there's a line item for that. However, we, we pretty much have a program in place, and we have a DEP-approved program that we actually can train operators or train, trainees, actually bring them off the street in a lot of cases. And they can take the, they can take the, the course, it's usually about a five-month course, and we're getting ready to do this again, and then they can go ahead and take the state exam. And there's a very strong possibility that we could hire them, and fifty percent of the operators that we have today in our plants went through this program, and we're gonna continue with this program.
You've got a way to, to fill the plants with skilled labor?
Yes, exactly, yeah, we train them, and we have a program in place.
If there are no other questions, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comments. Come back to the day, ask any final questions?
No, no final questions.
I would ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor to approve, seconded by Councilman Glufus. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed?
Passes unanimously.
Gentlemen, thank you. We now move to item thirteen, if you would be so kind.
Mr. Mayor, Council, it's the resolution of City Council, City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving an engineering consultant contract with CPH LLC for the Waste Water Treatment Facility One expansion study, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute said contract, providing for severability for conflicts for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
All right, so this is a presentation for Waste Water Treatment Facility Number One, an expansion engineering study. This is a scheduled capital improvement project for award of an engineering consultant contract, approximately nine-hundred-and-twenty K. This is an aerial view of Waste Water Treatment Facility Number One, located at twenty-six Utility Drive, it's right next to our stormwater operation also. Okay, well, I'll just go through a couple quick points about the general components on the plant site. So we'll start out where the water first, where the wastewater comes into the plant, that's the active headworks. After it goes through some processing there to separate sand and grit, that flow is then turned into the oxidation ditches, which is then aerated. Then you can see we have clarifiers, which is another process, digesters, the, the effluent after the process is stored when it's not being used to some extent, what we can put into the six-million-gallon ground storage tank. And then you can see there, kinda at the bottom of the page, we have the reclaimed water high-service pumps. And at the very top of the page, bio, biosolids centrifuge and truck loading station. Okay, so one of the kinda interesting things or beneficial information for the council is to understand, in our industry, we often talk in terms of treatment trains, okay? So in this case, you would say a treatment train, well, okay, we have three oxidation ditches, three pairs of clarifiers, effectively, let's just say, three sets of digesters. So a combination of the oxidation ditches, the clarifiers and the digest, we consider like each one of those a treatment train, all right? So a little bit later in the slide, you'll see some of the proposed number for the expansion. You'll say, well, where do you guys come up with that? Well, that's building a fourth treatment train, okay? All right, so Waste Water Treatment Facility One is an activated sludge domestic wastewater facility permitted to treat six-point-eight-three million gallons per day. Plant One has been in continuous operation for over forty years. The last expansion upgrade occurred in two thousand and six, from four million gallons per day to six-point-eight-three million gallons per day. Future expansion will increase treatment capacity to approximately nine-point-one million gallons per day, adding two-point-two-seven million gallons per day. So that's where that number comes from, that would be adding a fourth treatment train, all right? So another oxidation ditch, pair of clarifiers, et cetera. Waste Water Treatment Facilities are amongst the most complex and expensive infrastructure implements within a community. Current budgetary value for designing and constructing Waste Water Treatment Facilities is approximately twenty to thirty dollars per gallon. So for example, the two-point-two-seven million gallon per day treatment expansion would cost approximately forty-five million to sixty-eight million dollars. Waste Water Treatment Facility One recent and current projects within the past five years, so I'm just gonna show you a, a quick rundown on some of the major capital projects that we did, and there's obviously many, many other little smaller projects that are performed, you know, by the plant operations with equipment replaced, smaller equipment replacements or, so going down the list, re-equipment and restore two of the clarifiers, that was completed, and that was approximately eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. New mechanical bar screens at the headworks, that's also completed, one-point-one million dollars. We installed an ozone treatment system to the headworks, that was three-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars. A sixteen-inch force main was added to the north end of the facility and taken to the front of the headworks, that was three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. A new administration building was completed recently, seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, and a new above-ground fuel tank was completed, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. And then, under contract currently, which is a, a project that was presented to you previously, is the floating jet aerators to be added to the oxidation ditches and the headworks rehabilitation and bypass system. So those are two-point-three million and two-point-seven million dollars respectively, and that's under current contract. Under design, we have generator one replacement, the plant uses two, essentially, two backup generator zones, so it's kind of almost under two separate grids, if you will. So we're, the, the older generator is about done, and we're, we're looking to, looking to replace that in the very near future. Biosolids handling facility and screw press equipment, that's already under procurement. The design plans, that's for the equipment. The facility itself, the design will be completed approximately in one month. We expect that facility with the equipment to run approximately four-point-five million dollars. So that brings a total exposure of about eighteen-point-four million dollars to the plant within the past five years and probably what will also include the next year to year and a half, so by the time the biosolids facility is done and the generators replaced. And then here, just here are some quick pictures of some of these projects that we did. You can see the re-equipping of the clarifiers, a pretty big basin there, mechanical bar screens at the headworks. This is the ozone treatment system that was installed. This actually goes into the, the, the high-service pumps, the effluent pump station, rather. You're just seeing the little ozone generator building part of that. And then the sixteen-inch force main, you can see that route kinda went around the perimeter of the north end of the plant now to Blair Castle Drive. That, that took care of a bottleneck issue we had with some force mains and helped upstream pump station performance quite a bit. And then you can see a picture of the brand-new administration building and the brand-new above-ground fuel tank, that was just completed, what, three, four weeks ago? And this is kind of a slide that you've seen before, with that floating jet aerator and headworks bypass restoration. Here you can see the three oxidation ditches existing, each ditch getting four floating jet aerators, and then just a, kind of a quick schematic of the, the active headworks and the bypass piping that'll be installed, so that that headworks can be taken down and rehabilitated. And then the brush aerators on your left, that's, that's the, that's our prob, that's one of the problem components that we have, effective but break down quite often, and the floating jet aerators are what the proposed equipment is to replace that. Headworks rehabilitation, you can see on your left a, a pretty good picture of the overall headworks with the two primary effluent pipes coming in, it's a twenty-inch pipe and a sixteen-inch pipe, and the two mechanical bar screens in the background, and just kinda off to the left there is the, the grit and sand separator, and then a picture of the old backup generator, which you can kinda tell that's pretty old.
Had a great personality.
All right, biosolids facility, that's the existing biosolids facility. This also, this uses what we call a centrifuge to dewater the biosolids, and that gets trucked off, but the, the, that, that centrifuge breaks down, and it recently broke down again, so... So, we did just get one of the three screw press units from, from, from direct purchasing. And the guys are rigging that up right now to basically replace what the centrifuge used to do. And so, that's a pretty, pretty interesting piece of equipment there. There'll be two more coming when the facility is constructed. Now, looking at the flows, this is kind of the, kind of the, the whole basis of why we need to do the plant expansion. Three parameters that we track are things that, that, data that we give to the DEP, Florida Department of Environmental Protection. They look at monthly average flows, they look at three-month average flows, and then they look at annual average flows. And all of those are based on dailies. So, when you're seeing a number on here, it's what is the average day flow over a month, over three months, over twelve months? So, that's the graph you're looking at. And one of the interesting things about this is you can, you can see how weather events and groundwater table affects the collection system. So, when you're looking at the, say, the monthly average, that's where you're going to get your biggest swings up and down in, in flows to the plant. Any, any kind of collection system, the size of Palm Coast or bigger, is going to have what we call INI, infiltration and inflow. That's just a, that's just a consequence of having a collection system. And, you know, there's, there's no system the size is going to be without those issues. So, we have to have that, we have to process that water, you know, it gets mixed in with the sewage and everything. So, you see some kind of ups and downs. But the, the main thing is, is looking at the avial, I'm sorry, the annual average day flow, which is that gray line. And you can see the, the continuous trend is going up and up. So, this is twenty-four months of data, recent twenty-four months of data. So, you can see that's creeping up. And just kind of in summary, looking at that twenty-four months of data, we have an aver, annual average day flow of six point two-nine MGD, which is ninety-two percent of the permitted capacity of the plant. We had a highest single month in that data set of seven point nine-three MGD, which was a hundred and sixteen percent of the permitted capacity. And a highest three-month average, which is something also that the DEP looks very closely at, seven point seven-one MGD, which is a hundred and thirteen percent of permitted capacity. So, that's, that, those are overages, obviously. The study purpose and goals. Explore options for expanding wastewater treatment facility one. Treatment capacity from its current six point eight-three MGD to nine point one MGD or possibly greater as needed to accommodate increased sewer flows. Identify needed upgrades of existing mechanical and electrical equipment. Consider modification of treatment processes needed to meet future FDEP criteria. Master plan the site layout, determine best configuration for expansion components such as additional six million gallon ground storage reuse tank, an equalizer tank, dedicated sewer truck discharge receiving and pumping station, oxidation ditches, clarifiers, digesters, et cetera. Compile all previous wastewater treatment facility one projects for unified record drawings. Now, what that is, is that over a long period of time, this plant's been in operation, there's been little projects here, little projects there. And probably somewhere in the late nineties, early two thousands, datum shifted. So, we used to go buy an older nineteen twenty-nine datum, which was NGVD, and now we use the NAVD, which is nineteen eighty-eight. So, there's about, for Palm Coast, there's about a one-foot difference in, in datum shift. So, what this is basically doing is taking all these old plans, some of them more recent, compiling them and creating one unified record drawing on a singular datum that we can use as a base drawing for designing expansion. Alright, so that's an important piece. And then provide preliminary design report. The PDR will be used for permitting of the expansion. And as a part of that process, we'll be getting a thirty percent design plan out of this. So, part of this is not just, it's not just a study, it's actually engineering. And then provide cost estimates, funding options, and design, and a design-build package if we decide that that's the best route to go. And then continuing on, expansion probable cost and schedule. So, the probable cost of expansion, we could discuss with that a little bit earlier. We're expecting that to run somewhere between forty-five million to seventy million dollars. So, the funding may be available through state appropriations or state revolving fund loan, which that, that's also through the state, FD, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, essentially. Complete expansion design study by the end of two thousand and twenty-four. Begin the design by early two thousand and twenty-five. That's moving from the thirty percent on to the sixty and ninety and a hundred. Complete design and permitting in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. Begin construction in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-seven. Complete construction and place expansion into service by late fiscal year two thousand and twenty-eight. Optional design-build would combine design and construction efforts starting in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Design-build may compress overall schedule. However, long lead times on major equipment and materials may be the limiting factor on schedule compression. So, that's very important for the council to understand, that we, we can rush forward to get to a point and then we're stopped because of equipment. And we're finding this right now with our other plant expansion. Major electrical pieces of equipment have, are turning out to have extremely long lead times. And even in the wastewater aspect, we have panels with our pump stations and so forth. Some of those are going more than a year out. So, that's why I'm giving you a, trying to give you a realistic look at, you know, when can the expansion be online, right? So, we've got to go through all this process and then, then go through the design and then, you know, get the actual construction done. So, I'm really kind of looking at this more that we have probably two to two and a half years of construction involved with this expansion, you know, from a realistic standpoint. But we will have, we'll be given an option, you know, to, to potentially go to design-build if that's really what's decided to be in benefit. So, I'll take any questions now.
Just a question, so you went, so this is a study. You forecasted you were going to go from six point eighty-three to nine point one. Now, isn't that the purpose of the study to help you figure out what that finish line is? But you seem to have already gotten there.
That's just a very rough estimate to give you some idea of what, what that, that timeline is. The, the study will also evaluate that, that's correct.
I guess my concern is, does the study use that? And is that the end game for the study?
Oh, no, not necessarily, not necessarily.
I've been around the block on a few different studies, so I'm just, I'm asking you to be upfront here. If you dictate the, the, the end game, that's what you end up with sometimes.
Well, we're, we're, we're going, we're going to try to beat those, those numbers. I mean, that, this is, I'm just trying to set forth a realistic expectation.
This is your in-house gut, okay.
Correct.
So, then, then the other question I have is, when the study is complete, will this city council, and I, I include myself in the group, which has zero experience in this level of detail, unless if I'm speaking out of turn, so be it, but...
Oh, I spent my whole life studying this, now you're like the back of my hand, you too, right?
So, so this guy definitely did not. So, here's what I want to know. When the study is done, and it's a very expensive study, and to Councilwoman Pontieri's point, am I going to know where we're going to be at five years, ten years, and twenty years down the road? What I'm going to need, that's what I want to know.
Oh, okay. The study, the study is for the expansion. It, it's not, it's not looking at, you know, future, it, it, it will touch on our projections for development needs, yes. It will look at that. It'll have to take into account those projected flows, which is why, you know, the low-hanging fruit, if you will, would be the fourth train option, right? Well, you already have three of this, let's just go put a fourth one in and bang. But there, there's, for the amount of money that these plants are costing to construct now, and the timeframe that they're, they're requiring, it's probably going to be more of a hybrid thing potentially, where we're using a different technology, we're using some membrane technology. And, and some of it is just, you know, how are we meeting future DEP parameters? Right now, that plant, we, we have some river discharge capabilities, we try not to do that. We, we mostly dispose of wet weather conditions in our, in our rapid infiltration basin areas and so forth. So, yeah, all this stuff will be looked at and we'll assess various stages of their analysis and recommendations and then decide, you know, from point to point, okay, we're going to not look at this, we want to continue with that.
So, this city council, I, again, I think wants to be assured that we will feel comfortable, that we are ahead of, if demand is the right word? I mean, that's what we're going to need to know. And I'm assuming that we will, you will help us understand that through this study.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and the, it, it's not, I, I kind of want to emphasize too, it's not just the study component of it, you're getting a thirty percent design out of this. So, it'll be the, it'll be the foundation to complete a design and also engage in the permitting process with the DEP. So, it's, it's, it's a little beyond just doing the study aspect of it, but it will vet many options.
May, may I contrast that to wastewater treatment plant number three, where we're very aware of how our future expansion is going to be conducted? You know, it's very modular and, you know, by, by design on purpose so that this type of thing is more succinct and more clear in the future. But since this is going to require some type of hybrid situation, it's best to have this type of expertise come in and say how best to move forward?
Very much so, yeah, yes, we're, we're leaning heavily on their expertise. You know, process, process engineering, I mean, the, the plant operators know treatment processes quite well. But as far as treatment processing goes, that's kind of an engineering specialty, like in the civil realm. So, that's, that's why we're bringing in their expertise. But you also have a lot, a lot of electrical, and I, I, I would need to reemphasize this too. It's, when you're doing the plant expansion, it's not just you're expanding that part of it. You're also upgrading all the obsolete equipment too and getting those electrical grids to, to link up and, and your SCADA system to link up, your cybersecurity. So, we already know we have components that were done back, like electrical components that were installed in like that, that two thousand and six era. They don't even make parts for this stuff anymore. So, you know, we're kind of in that, you know, nebulous area where we have to do a little bit in between, but ultimately, we want an overarching plan to overhaul all those type of systems so it's modern and, you know, we have some kind of reliability. I mean, there, there, we don't have control over the industry that builds this stuff, right? I mean, as far as electronics and so forth, all we can do is go with what we believe is the most resilient at the time that we're doing it, that's all, so, yep.
Seems like a must-have to me, no brainer.
Yeah, I mean, I can't exist without it. I mean, I'm, I'm not qualified to, to dig in there and fine-tune it certainly at this point, but I'll certainly be trying to read every page of the study to do my best to understand it.
And cyber security too, which is obviously vital.
Okay.
I have a quick question about the finances of it. Thank you. It seems that these studies are being done, one, because of age, but two, because of increased capacity? Is that accurate? So, are we able, and this might be a question for city manager or Mr. DeLorenzo, are we able to use either impact fees or if we do get state monies for some of these projects that we're, that are somewhat related, will we be able to reimburse monies for these studies possibly in the future?
I'm, I'm not sure I'm clear on your question, because we're, we are talking about an enterprise fund and they're treated a little bit uniquely. So, Jason's possibly will work up here for the impact fees. But appropriations, yes, it would be a balance of that revenue coming in, utilization, and be able to look at the utility rate study that's coming forth here shortly.
Okay, great, thank you. The impact, I don't know, I'm asking. Can impact fees be used for things like this?
Yes, Jason DeLorenzo, Chief Staff. I confirm with Helena Carl and Steve that, yeah, that's eligible expense.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody in the public would like to comment on this item at this time? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll come back to the dais, any final questions while we have these guys here? These gentlemen here? I appreciate the presentation, I wish I was able to digest it. I'll, I will spend some more time so that I can understand it better, because I have to admit, I don't understand it as well as I would like to. But you may be seeing me around your offices more so that I can have a better understanding of what each of those accomplishments that you have made are and where we're going, because it's still a little bit disjointed for me. But I'm beginning to understand the history better and can understand why we are where we are. Are we comparable to any other cities with this assortment of, of processes that we have? Or are we unique?
Well, I, I don't think we have any unique technologies per se. I mean, for example, this activated sludge plant technology that we use at wastewater treatment plant one is used all over Florida. It was the, it was the premier treatment process for, for many, many years. You know, it was, it was the best solution at the time when it was put in. But it has some advantages, just for conversation purposes real quick, I know it's getting late, but when you look at our, our newer facility, our wastewater treatment plant two, right? That's a membrane facility.
Right.
Now, it produces real high-quality effluent, right? It's why it's called advanced waste treatment. That allows that discharge to be de-chlorinated and then wet weather can be sent into the wetlands, right? If that was an advanced waste treatment, most likely, we would not be getting permitted to do that. There's a thing called an apricot rule, and you got to meet those, those requirements to be able to discharge, okay? So, when, but, the difference was, you can take much higher peak flows through an open ditch system like wastewater treatment plant one. Can't do that wastewater treatment plant two. You know, if it's four million gallons, that's four million gallons, you're not going to slam six through this. This, this old plant can take some pretty high spikes. We're talking like ten, very, you know, temporary. We're talking like two, three days in a row, you might get like ten. We've even had close to fifteen million gallons go through that plant. So, it's reaching, so you kind of have two things, you have a treatment capacity and you have a hydraulic capacity. So, you don't, if you had that going for a long period of time, you're, you're not going to meet parameters, which is the water quality parameters required by DEP, you know, for discharge. So, and, and just one more, one more thing, which we didn't discuss in here. The proposal came in initially at one point four million and we negotiated it down to the price you're saying now. So, I know it seems like a lot, but in comparison to the, what the, what we believe the cost of the construction of the project's going to be, it's less than two percent. Just to put things in perspective, like about one and a half percent.
Right, well, I, I will definitely come spend some time with you to get up to speed a little bit. Alright, with that, I would, I've already been out to the public. If there's no other questions, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Vice mayor's made a motion to approve, is there a second? I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, are there any opposed? And does the clerk have the count?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Council, if you would read in our next...
Sure.
Where are we?
We have one more presentation.
Okay.
So, this is the resolution that goes along with that presentation. And the title of it is, is the resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, approving a contract with GPS Civil Construction Incorporated and a project contingency for the construction of the raw water main, main extension water treatment facility number three well-filled project, authorizing city manager designated to negotiate, finalize and execute any necessary documents, providing for severability conflicts, implementing actions and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Ready to go?
All yours.
Alright, next presentation, raw water main extension for the water treatment facility three well-filled area. This is for award of a construction contract to construct a raw water main that'll interconnect well capabilities between water treatment facility one and water treatment facility three. This is a real easy one, so we'll get through this one pretty quick. So, the project involves interconnection of three existing raw water production wells to supply water treatment facility one with additional raw water to increase production, improve water quality and increase operational flexibility. The, the construction is approximately nineteen hundred linear feet of eight-inch raw water main. construction is approximately 1,900 linear feet of eight-inch raw water. The scheduled capital improvement project for award of a construction contract is approximately $295,000. And this is a slide just showing west of the tracks up by water treatment facility three, you can see the well-filled area there. That's just a general well-filled area. We got several wells up in that area. And then there's a line where you see that north into raw water main production well serving water treatment plant one. There's a raw water main going south and then down Palm Coast Parkway. So this next slide shows a little more clearer detail. So the three wells that we're looking at, being able to redirect to water treatment facility one is well 133, 134, and 135. So the kind of the darker blue that you're seeing there is the existing raw water main and the cyan color, the lighter blue, is the project. It's the proposed raw water main. And that's basically it. Don't really have anything else for that one.
If I can add just one quick thing, kind of an afterthought, I probably should have put it in here, but a primary function of our water resource planning is to provide water for periods of drought and high demand, including high peak water demands. And that's kind of what this is all about. So based on our own initiative, we believe that some of our existing wells that serve water plant number three can be redirected to provide water for water treatment plant number one. They're pretty much at this point in time needs it the most. So that's, again, that's the reason for this. The projected well redirection idea is not related to a water quality problem. It is only to better match the demand for water with the availability of wells assigned to each plant. That's all.
You're fine tuning the system a little bit.
That's all.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right.
I have no questions.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a reason that we're not replacing with a bigger pipe? Basically, it's an eight-inch main both ways, right? Is it because the flow doesn't dictate that? That's not really a necessity to have a larger pipe?
Not for those three wells down.
Okay. That's my only question.
Any members of the public would like to comment on this item at this time? Seeing nobody come forward, back to the dais. If there are no other questions or discussion, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Vice Mayor makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
One second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Without any other discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Gentlemen, well done and...
Intentional? My fault. Well done.
Yes.
You got to get them when you can. Thank you. And I appreciate your expertise and the efforts that you put in. And I especially appreciate your attention to the system and trying to fine tune and improve what we already have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll thank Councilman Clufus for giving us a quickie there. We're up to number 15, which would be legislative priorities. Do you have to read that in?
I do.
Go ahead.
This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, approving the 2024 state legislative priorities, providing effective dates, severity conflicts, providing for movement actions, and providing for an effective date.
Very good.
Good evening again, Mayor, City Council. These are your legislative priorities that we discussed on August the 8th. Not going to give a presentation on those again since we worked through consensus on those, but I'll just give you an update to some of the requests that you made at that August 8th meeting. That included adding a request for construction funding for a Palm Coast YMCA. Also, there was a discussion about were there additional reclaimed main line extensions? And in working with Alex, we did identify another reclaimed line extension that would be at Citation Boulevard. Citation Boulevard, the new portion of it that's being constructed as part of Seminole Palms will include a reclaimed water main line. And this will be to connect with that terminus and bring it out to Belter Boulevard where a recent project that you approved, well, you approved the MPD this evening, and then the other one across the street a couple of weeks ago. So that will be to connect up those two projects, which will have reclaimed pipe in the ground and be able to service those. And then also, the third item was preservation of the historic fire station 22. So we will, with your concurrence and vote this evening, we will work to include those in our request to the state. And just one last thing is that we also, upon your request, added the regional RIB site as our third Northeast Florida Regional Council regional priority.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeLorenzo. With the consensus of, well, not consensus, with the agreement of my fellow city council members, I am concerned and with increasing anxiety about our north-south evacuation routes. And I speak about Old Kings Road in particular. I am increasingly concerned that we are not improving Old Kings Road from its full length from north to south. We've done it in phases. We've done it in bits and pieces. We haven't addressed what I consider, I mean, I myself consider to be a victim of the location somewhere near Town Center Boulevard and Old Kings Road. I, with your agreement, would like to add that on to our legislative asks so that it becomes a part of our forward-looking asks, so that we can once and all finish this Old Kings Road evacuation route for emergency purposes and also for the economic development that it could provide in the future. I don't think it's going to alter anything that we have on the slate now, but I would feel comfortable if we could once and for all have all of Old Kings Road in line. So I'm open to comments.
I'm fully in agreement with that.
And I'm also hoping it spurs the future. We have an issue at that intersection, and I'm hoping that this begins to translate itself into an improvement to fix what we know is already problematic. So it's just something that I would ask that we would add to it. Is that something that you can do?
Sure. Mayor, City Council, you'll remember, our appropriation that we received for this year included the study area of Royal Palms, Town Center Boulevard, and Old Kings Road, and the Lehigh Canal area. And so, you know, we're going to work that study this year and then we could ask for design and construction dollars as we move forward, if that's your request.
And I think everybody's okay with that. I don't think it takes away from anybody's request this year because it's, you know, whether it floats this year or the next year, I just, I think I'd like to get it on the books because we know we're going to need it. And I think we're going to need it with increasing urgency as we go forward in the next couple of years.
I don't disagree with you conceptually, but if I'm hearing Mr. DeLorenzo correctly, are we asking for that too soon? If we're doing a study that's supposed to be analyzing the need for, I mean, should we wait on that ask next year?
Question.
I think it'll be okay. Right, you're looking at, you would have until June of 2025 to get, you know, to start expending, right? So I think that gives us enough time.
I don't want to say it too loudly, but I feel I have more leverage this year than I might next year.
I absolutely agree with that.
So I'm willing to roll the dice on it. Your point is very well taken.
No, I just want to make sure that we're prioritizing correctly.
No, no, no.
Because we have a lot of really scary things that we need money for.
No, no, agreed. And my intent is not to change the priority stack, but I'm also watching this because I do sit on the executive board of the TPO as well. So I have a good feel for how the priorities will go. And this will not change our current priorities in any way.
Just squeak louder.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Well, I had a question about that, just from a conceptual, you know, from a, I guess, process standpoint. Throughout the process, and I know that it's speeded up a little bit because of the election year sped up, it's late. How will we be kept in the loop with regards to how our appropriations requests are going, what we kind of get a feel of what we're going to get money for? Because obviously, we're about to close out this budget session, but as we all lovingly understand, the next one starts pretty darn soon. So as we're trying to plan, how will we know kind of how these things are stacking up?
My understanding of the timeline is that we would know by March of '24 where we are with our funding requests.
Okay, thank you.
So I think that would give you enough time as we move into the budget cycle.
Does that give you the direction that you need?
Yes, sir.
So then I would ask for a motion with the addition that we've talked about.
I'll make that motion.
So Vice Mayor Danko has made the motion to approve with the addition. Is there a second? Councilman Clufus has seconded the motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
And I made a mistake. I did not, we've already voted, I did not offer this out to the public.
Let's do it now.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on our legislative priorities at this time? Seeing no one, apologies, and so we've covered that. Good. So we now move to our consent agenda. So I will ask, City Council, are there any items on there that you would like to separate from the consent at this time? Seeing no one, then I would go ahead and open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the consent agenda? Yes, sir.
I've been waiting all night for this. This is two hours past my bedtime.
You and me both.
Yeah. Remember, I got to be my age. Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Consent item number 17. I have a question. I have two questions. The first question is, this law firm that we're going to potentially hire, what is it for? And more importantly, how much is it going to cost us?
Fair question. Who would like to? City manager, do you want to have staff tackle that?
I think I heard two questions. I'm not terribly clear on the first question.
First question, what is it for?
First question is, why are we, what are we going to use this law firm for when we got a very capable lawyer sitting up here?
It's not for legal services. It's actually for actuarial services. That means to project out possible cost of a upcoming decision. And it's a not-to-exceed dollar amount with a max of $25,000.
So can we clarify the actual, Bill, can you help us with that?
So we have no idea. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. We're going to go out and hire a law firm.
You're not.
You're not?
Not.
So let's get off of that now.
Not lawyers.
It's actuarial.
It's actuarial.
An actuary. Okay, we're going to hire an actuary. Okay. But we don't know what it's for yet. Well, we can't tell anybody what it's for yet. And second of all, we don't know how much this is going to cost because isn't there a limit of how much the city can authorize without it going to the council? Am I wrong?
So we do know what it's for.
Why am I glad?
So let's explain what it's for. Let's go there.
Oh, no, no.
Let's go ahead.
I'll sit down for this one.
The purpose of the exercise is?
Yes, it's with labor negotiations.
For what?
Labor negotiations.
Labor negotiations?
Yes.
For what, Bill?
And I look to our city attorney because I'm walking a thin line here on this item and the purpose behind it.
So we use an actuarial, actuarial, in order to forecast what the future liabilities, expenses, and/or contract negotiations might represent to us.
What are we trying to do?
Let me try to answer that. When you're in negotiations for your labor contracts, you're talking, some of the things you're talking about are not just their salaries, but also their benefits. And so instead of just agreeing to what they're asking for, you have to know what the long-term cost of that is going to be. And that's not something that necessarily you want to have answered by someone that's currently a staff employee of the City of Palm Coast because it's pretty technical.
We don't want to surprise anybody.
Correct. That's why you, and that's why you hire an actuary so that they can tell us, for purposes of what we can afford to offer in the contract negotiations, what the long-term expense is going to be to the taxpayers of the City of Palm Coast.
Okay, I'm going to go back to my initial question. We're going to hire an actuary to tell us how much something is going to cost. But I want to know what this thing is that we're trying to figure out what it's going to cost us. I want to know what that is.
Not more than $25,000.
No, 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 no.
He means the subject matter.
So for example, you're asking a question. Let me give you one piece of this and correct me a little more.
No, no, I understand he keeps telling me $25,000.
No, 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 no. But you're asking a different question. What you're asking is, so we don't know as a city, how many people are going to fall victim to illness and at what level? An actuarial has data that can project what the future liability for medical insurance, for example, might be. We don't know that. So we can't forecast it. So we call in an expert that gives us the data so that we can use that data to forecast what these costs might be. So that when we enter into labor negotiations, we have a benchmark, we have a starting point.
But when you go to hire an actuary, he's going to want to know what he's going to come back and tell you it's going to cost. For what? Is it going to, am I replacing the transmission in the car? Am I putting an engine in the car? Am I putting the rear end in the car? No. I want to know, all I'm asking is one simple question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What is this for?
Are there line items in the?
We got to have, we got to have an idea of what we're going to ask the actuary, how much this is going to cost.
Yes, so, yes, there is an answer to your question. Can somebody phrase it for me better than I can?
I'm going to give it a shot.
Go ahead.
We have to be very, it's confidential. It's, when we say labor negotiations, we can't say really any more than that. But when we're looking at long-term projection of what benefits and things like that are going to cost as we invest as a city, we don't know those numbers off the top of our head. And we certainly don't know them when we're looking at the possibility of retroactive benefits and pay and things of that nature. So we're looking at, we have to do this so that we can make an informed decision as council as we move forward as to whether or not we are going to agree to certain asks in these negotiations. So the purpose in hiring this actuary is so that they can give us those projected costs, and that makes us more informed as we enter into these negotiations.
So let me put it back on you for a minute. So you're the union, you're coming to me, you're going to tell me that you want A, B, and C. So now I've got something that I can evaluate your requests on. Does it make sense? Is it too much? Is it too little? That's what's happening here. And I can't be more detailed than that because like Councilwoman Pontieri says, it's confidential information. But now we have, now I can analyze what you're asking for. Is it fair? Is it what the market says it should be?
Can we afford it?
And can we afford it, of course.
Okay.
Does that help a little bit? You've been on these boards, so you know. You already know these, yeah.
Now, okay, so we're going to hire an actuary.
Yes.
He's going to tell us exactly how much this undisclosed plan is going to cost us.
No, he's going to provide us with data.
He's going to provide you with that.
Correct.
How much this plan, if we go with it, is going to cost.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
What hap, so it can't, he can't charge us more than $25,000, right?
So I understand there's a cap on what this will cost. Correct. Gotcha.
Okay, good. Okay, so there is a cap for 25 grand. So if it goes more than $25,000, then it's got to come back across the table here, right?
Can't answer the question. It's capped at 25. Can it exceed that or not?
What happened, you said it's 30,000.
Just a second. So the resolution as proposed is a cap of $25,000. And the services are very clear. They're very targeted through sole source.
So they know it's 25. That's it. Don't come, that's it, 25.
Okay.
And this is what they do.
Okay, now, is the public going to be allowed to put their input into this binding? Or is it going to be like a done deal?
It's not the kind of product that...
I'm sorry, I'm asking tough questions.
It's not the kind of product that the public would necessarily have the skills to give input into. This is, we're hiring an expert to give us specific information so that we can do better contract negotiations for the benefit of the public. Once all is said and done, then this information will become public. But during the process of contract negotiations, this process is not open to the public. And that's so that we can negotiate without the other side knowing what we can and cannot do.
Right, there's two sides to the table. So, yeah, so it will be transparent when it's completed. So, it will be transparent when it's completed.
Okay. One more question, and then we could...
Last one.
Okay. What happens if, according to the contract, you, the actuary can only spend, can't send us a bill for more than twenty-five thousand dollars?
Right. Correct.
Okay. Does the residents have a right to complain about spending the twenty-five thousand?
Always.
Always? Good. Good. So, how does the residents find out that we got a bill for twenty-five thousand dollars from the actuary?
When the report, when the, when the report is finished, the negotiation is complete, all of that documentation will be available to you.
And how long is this going to take?
I, I, I don't know. Is it a...
We don't have a set timeline on this, Mayor. We're working through the mechanics of this whole process.
Year, is it?
I mean, guess. Guess to me.
I, I can't guess.
Six months?
No, I won't guess. I, I don't know the answer. Negotiations like this can go on for a very long time.
Oh, we know.
You should know that too because you've been involved in this stuff before. So, it could go on for years. Unlikely.
Okay. But it'll be in the future.
Definitely.
So, the residents will know when this twenty-five thousand dollar bill is going to come due to be paid.
They'll know that it has been paid and what it's been paid for. Correct.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Phew. Okay. Yes, sir.
Short, sweet, good evening, Mayor. Gene Dowd, Palm Coast resident.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry because I, I need to catch up. Stay right where you are. So...
We're just on consent agenda.
I'm in the middle of the consent agenda. Are you here for consent or public comment?
Public comment.
Stay where you are. Stay where you are for a minute.
I'm sorry.
So, no, no, yes, okay, stay right there.
Four hours, he came up one minute early.
Are there any members of the public that would like to further comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will come back and I will ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Pontieri has made a second. So, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
The motion passes unanimously.
Now, I would welcome final public comment.
My apologies, Mayor and City Council. Gene Dowd, Palm Coast resident. I'd like to thank all first responders, all military, and especially the first responders as was already said this, this past weekend, what they went through. Like to thank everyone involved getting ready for the storm. And I'd like to bring up a couple of things that's happened over the last two months, July and August. There's been comments made that no lawyers or realtors should be elected to City Council. There's been attacks, and again tonight, about moving, a comment made by the Vice Mayor. That should not happen, and you guys can't defend yourselves. Also, there was an attack on the former mayor. When does this stop? I don't know how you men and women take this. Whether I agree with you politically, it's wrong. And what's the next step? Do we not elect anyone that has a higher degree than a GED? Do we not elect by religion, by race, by politics? When does it stop? And the reason I step up here tonight is to tell the City Council and the city employees that not everyone agrees with what's said at this mic. We have a right to speak for three minutes, but I don't think we have a right to attack others freely. And that's what I've heard the last couple of months, and I really want the city employees to know. I'm sure I'm not the only one that supports the city employees of Palm Coast and the daily work they do, whatever position. Whether I agree with you, City Council members, not on everything. And yes, it is getting late, so thank you.
We appreciate your comment. Thank you very much. If there are no members of the public that want to address City Council at this time, I will close public comment. And I will ask City Council members if they have any final comments for this evening.
I, I just wanted to let you know we all have to have thick skins sometimes, and you just do it.
Just really quickly, the multi-municipality meeting with Flagler Beach, Bunell, Beverly Beach, and Flagler County is coming up. Either, it's supposed to be towards the end of September. So, I just want to get consensus on one thing that's not on the agenda, and that is exploring utilization, better utilization of Malcompra. It currently has a nice parking lot, there's horseback riding, semi-okay facilities.
Would you let City Manager know? Because I think I'm your backup there so that she can let me know so I can attend